Welcome one, welcome all. Thank you all so very much. We appreciate your participation coming forward to this public hearing. Now, one thing I want to establish, my dear friend and I, Mr. Moss, are having a discussion about the viability of people speaking if they're representative group for 10 minutes. Now, once again, I do what got to apologize, I was remiss in not getting back to him today. But, once again, I understand that that policy applies to planning items, but also state mandated thing, and from what I understand, that the ordinance for time is a city ordinance thing. Now, this is not going to be resolved tonight. We will get it resolved, so if it's okay, we will discuss this in the future as a governance issue, but I would like just to hold, because my concern is that somebody speaks for a group, that preamps anybody else from the group to speaking, and I just want to make sure that everyone that is here has the opportunity to get their three minutes. So, with your permission, but I'm sure Mr. Moss would like to make a statement.
I would. Every other Tuesday, the following statement is made by the mayor. Quote, "I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representative groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items and items where a public hearing is required by state law. Since the public notice for this hearing deals with the personal property tax increase, it's a public hearing required by state law, and therefore by the statement that the mayor makes every other Tuesday on behalf of all of us, I think that we should be honoring that publication. I will agree that what he says every other Tuesday is not in alignment with the city ordinance, but nothing precludes this body from honoring the words that we speak when we've made the error of not communicating what the ordinance requires. And it is a difference of opinion, but the facts are the facts." Thank you.
And I truly respect Mr. Moss's opinion on this, and obviously, the intent of being here is full participation going forward. And we will deal with this, and if it's okay, I'm going to rule that at least for tonight, we're going to stay consistent to the way that we have been doing this for years, and we'll keep it at three minutes, but I will give Mr. Moss my personal word that we will have a discussion with this as a council to make sure. But be assured that we want to hear from the public, and this is a very important thing going forward. Let's face it, we have, as a city, as a Commonwealth, and as a nation, many challenges confronting us in many ways. The storm Hurricane Matthew changed the dynamic of the city of Virginia Beach and altered many of the priorities that we have in our city. During our retreat, we had a pre-meeting with the citizens, and we also had electronic engagement with the citizens. And we also had a sit-down at the convention center where we got your input. Without doubt question or reservation, the top priority in this city is storm water management, sea surge, and things of that nature, and maintaining our environment, and maintaining the quality of life, but also maintaining our capacity for economic development. That is the highest of priorities. The next highest priorities was public safety, but also then going down the line to ensure that the people in Virginia Beach have the quality of life that they have, they deserve, and to keep that going. Now, once again, we live in contentious times, my friends, and what we need, we have to define ourselves in Virginia Beach, we have to bring the public together to help us solve the problems going forward. And as my hope is we hear, as your elected body and as the public together, that we do so with civility and mutual respect, because once again, the problems that we are challenged are all our problems. So I hope we come here, and then when we have any type of public engagement going forward, that we work together to solve our problems. Okay? With that being said, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the first speaker, please.
Mayor, I need you to read the special session letter.
Okay. My apologies. Okay. In accordance with Virginia Beach Code Section 2-21, and by authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special formal session of the Virginia Beach City Council, Wednesday, April 24, 2019, 6:30 PM. Old Donation School, 4663 Honey Grove Road. The purpose of this special formal session is to conduct a public hearing to obtain public input regarding, first, FY 2019-20 Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program; two, increase in the personal property tax rate; three, increase in the real estate tax rate; four, authorization of $71,9710 in general obligation bonds; next, authorization of $14,373,971 in water and sewer revenue bonds; next, authorization of $25 million in storm water utility revenue bonds; next, increase in water usage rate; next, increase in solid waste management fee; next, increase in storm water management fee; next, increase in SSD levy with Harbor Point Special Service District; and finally, boundary modification of Town Center Special Service District. Okay? All right. We are now ready to go forward.
The first speaker will be Michael Summers. After Mr. Summers is George Bryant.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, council members. My name is Mike Summers, and for the past six years, I've been proud to serve as chair of your Public Library Board. I thank you for your support for our first-class library system. The $18.5 million annual budget supports a remarkable range of services to include records management for all city offices, voter registration, patron access to check out several million items this past year, customized small business assistance, literally thousands of adult and youth programs, partnerships with our public schools that encourages and supports reading, a career online high school program, technology access and training, and numerous other services for more than 400,000 library card holders. We also thank you for the capital improvement plan funds that are being used to renovate eight of our 10 libraries. The quality of life in our great city is truly enhanced by the public library, and I do appreciate your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Bryant, and then after Mr. Bryant is Diana Howard.
Mayor Dyer, members of the council, Mr. Hanson. I'm George Bryant, and I've lived in Wolf's Air Plantation for 51 years. The various tax and fee increases you have proposed against the citizens of Virginia Beach are not justified in a budget of more than $2 billion. That also includes spending increases of 2.6% just from reassessments and other naturally occurring jumps in revenue. While the impact on taxpayers is small, we are dealing with an economy where most families can't put together a few hundred dollars for emergency expenses. Surely, in a $2-plus-billion-budget, you can find reductions to make up the revenue provided by the proposed increases without impacting services, one iota. Your budget includes staffing increases of 78.7 FTEs for the schools and 53.47 FTEs for the city. I can't believe that most of the work those people would do can't be absorbed into the existing employee base. That's especially so for the schools where the enrollments are dropping. The other area I'm concerned about is the city's debt. Truth and Accounting recently reported that the city owes $1.5 billion in debt and unfunded liabilities. They say that's $916 million more than the city has in assets, or $5,900 per taxpayer. Your budget summaries state that the debt is about $2,000 per taxpayer. That sounds better, but we must realize that children and non-working family members do not pay taxes, so households or taxpayers is a more appropriate way to look at that. The city also has many unfunded capital projects, roads, schools, et cetera, that are not included in the current capital improvement plan. Where will this money come from? We pay more than half a million dollars a day in debt service. Where does this end? The existing debt, along with the aforementioned road and school projects, will substantially increase the price of living in Virginia Beach. Also, we can't keep handing tax money to developers with existing debt and the debt we face in the future. The budget increase of 3.6% is greater than increases in income for most taxpayers. Constantly increasing taxes and debt must change, or living standards for many will continue to decline. The lowest tax rate in tidewater is an invalid excuse to increase our taxes, as similar properties in nearby cities are assessed lower. Incomes are still less than before the recession due to lack of raises, and the government's monkeying with inflation figures. Many jobs pay less than before the recession. It's easy to manage by increasing taxes and fees. Good managers keep taxes down in the city, living within the conservative means of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Diana Howard, Mathemis Howard, is Marcus Goring.
Good evening, everybody. I'm the chair of the Virginia Beach Tea Party, and on their behalf, we oppose this budget, because we are taxed enough already. This budget is an assault on the taxpayers of Virginia Beach. We want a 1.5 cent increase in the real estate taxes, and a projected increase of 2 cents in the year 2023, '26, and '20. Unbelievable. 10 cents in the car tax, an increase from $4 to $4.10. 3.5 cents a day, daily increase for the next six years of stormwater fees. Last year, it was 2.5 cents for five years, so we made it higher this year. Last year, we wanted $1 a month on the trash fee, so we doubled down on it, put $2 a month from the trash fee for this year. And then there's the 49 cent increase in the water usage, which we can't really do anything about, because we have that contract with Norfolk. So, we seem to be ignoring the economic indicators, like the general sales tax growth is declining. That means that we don't have that extra revenue in our pocket, that disposable income to go out and do all this spending and everything. We have to make tough choices. We have 40% of our children are on free or reduced lunch, 8% of our residents are in poverty, 70% of Americans are living paycheck to paycheck. There is another choice. There's the people's budget by Councilmen Moss and Abbott, and we thank them for asking for our input on that budget. So it increases money for public safety pay compression above what the city manager put in for his budget. It increases money for drainage maintenance, and it uses our debt capacity for flooding projects to be done sooner rather than later. We did this by prioritizing in the budget. Instead of hiring more personnel, which just puts a burden on us taxpayers to provide salaries and benefits, the city needs to downsize and prioritize those proposed positions relative to the existing vacancies. We have how many positions that go unfilled? The city should not be adding any more. We should defer the city hall, the new one, and use that already funded $45 million debt service and the $30 million in future debt service that we're stockpiling the tip fund for on flooding projects. We're here all year long. 100% of that amusement tax is paid, most of the time, by us, because we're here all year long. So why don't we get half of that? Right? How about all the money that's stockpiled in the CIPs? There are projects in there that they're putting like $150,000 year after year after year, or $250,000 year after year, and it's not for any specific project. It's just stockpiling money, just in case. And then there are new projects that were put in there that were just putting money in this year, but we're not putting any money in it for the next six. It's not enough money to do those projects. So, we added all that up, right? And we want to reduce the padded contingency funds in the CIP to 6%. Some of those contingencies are way high, like 17% and stuff. I think there was like $300 million in contingency funds. So we should not be stockpiling money for funding wants while we're raising taxes and fees for needs. Make the tough choices like we have to do. It is easier for you to take 1% out of a $2 billion budget than it is for us. Vote no on the city manager's budget, and yes to the people's budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcus Goring. And after Mr. Goring is Jim Davis.
Dear Mayor, dear city council members, my name is Marcus Goring. I live in Cape Story at the Sea. And after interesting election, I asked many of you what you think about a tax raise after the election, and I never got a positive answer on that. Everybody said, "No, we're not going to raise taxes." Now, the mayor made really nice meetings in the town conventions, not convention centers, but the centers, and I think you heard also very much about that we don't want a tax raise, right there. And now the first thing that comes up is a tax raise, and I'm very opposed about that. The largest impact that has is to the people that live in poverty, of course. None of us, or me included, live in poverty, so we cannot understand, really, what the impact will be on them. I think you are taking an easy path, and we should think about how we can get the funds out of different ways, like doing lean management or Six Sigma projects in the city budget to find waste, to find cost reductions, to find redundancies. And then I also would like to know what happened with the 1.5% tax raise for the light rail? What happened with the surplus of the school budget from $24 and $20 million? We're talking there about $70 million. I don't know where they went to. Did they go into other projects? I don't know. And I'm also thinking, have you ever thought about raising the taxes for the businesses on the oceanfront? But I guess they have a big lobby, and that's a hard path to go. It's easier to take it from us. So, again, I'm very opposed about the tax raise, and I ask you all to vote no on this tax raise. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Jim Davis. And after Mr. Davis is Clarence Osborne.
Good evening. Good evening. I appreciate the time that you're spending here with us tonight, and I appreciate being able to come and speak to you. I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to the tax increases that have been proposed. While it may not seem like much to most of us, it's going to hurt those that are least able to pay it. Think about the retirees and the elderly people who live in Aragona Village or Cras Pembroke Manor, or wherever, that are struggling to meet their bills. You're going to take more money out of their pockets to fund the city instead of when they need it most. Think about the single mother living with two kids, perhaps in Kinsville or Brandon or wherever, that's struggling. She's struggling to pay the bills. She doesn't need higher taxes. You're strangling her, squeezing her like a sponge. Perhaps she'll be able to afford it, because she might not be able to take her kids out at the end of a hard week to go to get a Happy Meal or a pizza or something. But then that takes away the 5.5% tax you'd be paying into the tip fund for your next tourist project. Tonight, I was riding over here with somebody that was driving in Uber, and I was talking to him. He drives Uber to help pay the bills. If you increase his taxes, that means he has to drive more with Uber, which means he has less time to spend with his family. Do you really want him to have less time to spend with his family? There has to be a better way. I know it is important, the things that we're talking about, the full-day kindergarten. Public safety needs to be increased. Funding for the flood projects need to be increased, but there has to be a better way than constantly coming back to the same taxpayers year after year. Sooner or later, we run out of money. I know, I've met with, I've met most of y'all, and I know you're good, honest, hard-working people, and you have the best interest of this city at heart. But please, with this budget, show some compassion to the working poor, the elderly and the retirees in the city that have had enough tax increases. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clarence Osborne. And the next speaker is Rona Marsh.
Welcome. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Clarence Osborne. I am a firefighter with the city of Virginia Beach. I've been with the city of Virginia Beach for 17 years, and I've been a master firefighter for 13 years. What I would like to do is address the pay compression and urge the city council to fund a plan that fixes the compression of all members of the fire department, including firefighters, master firefighters, and captains. An example that I would like to give is three people, three people that I work with side by side. There's a firefighter who came in the same academy that I came in. He got promoted to master firefighter at the same time that I did. He left the city, came back, worked his way back up. He makes more money than I do. There's another master firefighter that was hired the same year that I was, but five months before. I picked up my master firefighter nine months before he did. He makes $770 a year more than I do. There's another master firefighter. We work side by side. He was hired five months before I was, and he picked up his master firefighter five months before I did. He makes $8,548 more than I do. Nobody can explain to me why there's such a difference between our pay. We are doing the exact same job, and nobody can explain it. I did a payroll adjustment form and an inter-office memo to Mr. Edwards, who's the human resources person, September 2018. I have not received an answer from that yet. I did a grievance February 19, 2019, because I never heard an answer. I inquired, 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 and nobody could answer. That grievance was denied, and now I have to appeal the grievance to the Virginia Beach Circuit Court. I'm just asking for the same pay of the people that sit next to me. And the only way we're going to fix the problem is not only fix it for one group, it starts at the firefighter level, up to the master, and then continues to the captain. We're just putting Band-Aids on this problem, and we've been doing this since I was hired. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rona Marsh.
Welcome, Rona.
And after Ms. Marsh will be William Bailey.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer and council members. You see me often. I am R. M. Marsh, and I come to talk to you about some of the extremes that I see attending meetings and listening to different people at the school board meetings and at your meetings. I want you to understand that we have a large number of people in poverty. It's not a percentage, it's a number. 46,902 people. That's a very big number. I hope everyone in the audience sees it. That's a lot of people that have to figure out how to pay their bills and make ends meet, and that's one extreme we have here in the city. The other extreme we have is the schools. The schools get 45.3% of the budget that you're handing out of the $2.2 billion. And the problem is, the schools tend to spend the money like it's not their money. They don't look at it as if it's taxpayers' dollars. And I'm very, very disturbed that they've been, what I would term, wasting money, and they came to see you yesterday, and they asked for even more money. You've already allotted, or they've already got a budget of $906.6 million. That's up $24.5 million, $24.5 million from last year or from this current year, and yet they came and asked for more money. And those same people who asked for that money are on this list. I believe Aaron Spence was there, Beth Anderson was there, I saw Sharon Felton and Carolyn Rye. These are the same people who go out to expensive dinners using taxpayers' dollars to pay for them. I guess if I had a credit card and I could go out and I could buy something that costs $49, a lobster tail, or New York sirloin, or oysters Rockefeller, if I could spend $460, $57 a piece, which far exceeds the policies, I would feel like I was getting a benefit. But as a taxpayer, I feel that the people who are in poverty never get to do that. We have an uncontrolled amount of spending at the school board. They need to be looked at. They haven't had a travel audit since 2010, June 4, 2010. They don't put their audits online, and we have a real difficulty getting basic information. I know school board members cannot get the information. And what's so frustrating is we have declining enrollments. We're going to be down 3,826 people in the 10 years that they projected. We're already down 2,039. So I'm asking you not to fund them, and to really realize that there are 39,979 people in this city who've had their water shut off. That's how bad the poverty, and that's how bad the shortage of funds are for families. And yet, you're going to raise the water bill, and people are going to have their utilities probably shut off even more. You really need to take a close look at what you're doing, because you're hurting a lot of people here if you don't go with the people's budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
William Bailey. And after Mr. Bailey is Don Newman.
Welcome. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm William Bailey, president of Virginia Beach Professional Firefighters. So I can cut down on the number of speakers tonight if I could get the folks that support public safety to stand up. You've heard me come in for the last 20 years and ask you to fix the pay compression problem. I first started that in 1999. This is my 20th year. Some of you are new to council. Many of you have been here for a very long time, and you've heard the speech, so I'm not going to go into depth on all of that. What you heard firefighter Clarence talk about earlier was the individual problems within the system. When you have to give somebody a $25,000 pay raise because they get promoted to captain, it is unsustainable, and it's a leading example of how messed up our pay system is and continues to be. If we continue to put Band-Aids on it, it's never going to be fixed, and 20 years from now, people are still going to be coming here complaining about it. So, I would ask you, the manager's recommendations are not adequate. They actually make pay compression even worse. But we have, as all the associations have banded together, and we've put a proposal together that adds steps that build on the manager's year three step. We've taken the year six step and made that 10%, and we've added a 5% increase at year nine. We feel that over a 10-year period, that will end the compression as we know it. It may add on the top end, but again, the sustainability of a pay raise when somebody gets promoted to captain is, we agree with the manager, it is not sustainable. And the only way you can fix that is to take the rank and file and bring their pay up, the people who serve these seniors, the elderly, the poor people in the community. We're out there working for them every day, and we're face-to-face with them. If it takes a tax increase or it takes a delay of other projects, it's been 20 years. We think that between the 10 or 11 of you in the future, that you all will be able to work that out. Every budget's a compromise, and there's give and take. We trust that you all were elected to find a way to fix this, and after the election in November, every single person supported public safety, ran on a public safety platform of fixing this problem. I feel like it's now or never, and we have the perfect group to work together to resolve this issue, and I'm counting on you, and all of those firefighters, police officers, and paramedics down at the street level are counting on you also. Weekend before something in the water starts, I'm not going to divide... The weekend before something in the water starts, I'm not going to divide public safety at all. I support the sheriff's pay parity issue. The resolution that you all passed back in April was for four years. I think that passed nine to one. I trust that four years is adequate. It's what you pledged, and I expect that you all will honor that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Phil.
Dawn Newman. And then the next speaker will be Dane Blythe.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, city council members, and city manager Hanson. My name is Dawn Newman. I'm a Virginia Beach resident, a teacher, and secretary of the Virginia Beach Education Association. I'm here this evening to support the school board's request for an additional four point nine million dollars to fully fund full-day kindergarten. On its current, very slow trajectory, the implementation of full-day kindergarten will have nine schools not offering full-day kindergarten in the two thousand and twenty-one school year. One of those nine schools is Newcastle Elementary, which is the school that my neighborhood attends. The fact that all schools do not have full-day kindergarten is an equity issue. As a Virginia Beach resident, I feel slighted that even though I pay real estate taxes, my neighborhood elementary school does not have full-day kindergarten. Every school needs to have full-day kindergarten, and ideally, it should be at the start of next school year. It is time to be equitable in what is provided to tax-paying residents. As an educator, I understand the value of full-day education, or full-day kindergarten. Longitudinal data published by Walston and West demonstrates that children in full-day kindergarten classes show greater reading and mathematics gains than those in half-day programs. The Center for Evaluation in Educational Policy states that teachers in full-day classrooms have more time to build relationships with their students and allows them to identify and address learning challenges. These early interventions save money and resources over the long term and increase the likelihood for success later in school. Teachers prefer full-day kindergarten because it allows them time, allows time for students to focus and reflect on activities and better prepares them for the learning that takes place in first grade. Lastly, as a school employee, I ask you to fully fund kindergarten now so that the school board and city council can finally make employee compensation a priority and give a significant pay raise to school employees. As candidates, you are happy to sing the praises of our schools. As city council members, you're quick to tell businesses looking to relocate to the beach that our schools are a hundred percent accredited and doing amazing work, yet you are slow to open the coffers and pay for the services rendered. It is time to do what is right for our young children, the tax-paying residents of the beach, and the hard-working school employees who make our schools great. Fully fund full-day kindergarten now, fix the inequity issue, listen to the teachers in the trenches, and fund our schools. Soon, there surely will be something in the water. It will be families and businesses jumping ship to go to a city that does have full-day kindergarten. And it will be school employees jumping ship for school districts that pay better pay and better benefits. Is that the ship you want to captain?
And after Mr. Blythe is Kelly Walker.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of city council. My name is Dane Blythe, and I live here in the Bayside District. So I'm here tonight to ask you to vote against this frenzy of proposed tax and fee increases. None of them are needed, and one that I find most egregious is the vote by a majority of the school board to ask you for yet another tax increase to pay for full-day kindergarten. I would like to thank school board members Weems, Manning, and Hughes for voting against this unnecessary tax increase. Two years ago, a majority of the school board requested a tax increase to pay for implementation of full-day K, and a majority of the city council passed it. Then the school board went on to divert millions of those dollars that were meant for pre-K for things like new buses, whiteboard replacement, a lot of other things that had nothing to do with full-day kindergarten. And guess what? Here they are again, asking for more money for taxes for the exact same thing that they were, that they should have saved that money and spent on kindergarten anyway. So the school board budget is almost a billion dollars, and you're telling me they can't find five million dollars to fund kindergarten? I just, I find that hard to believe. The school system has realized over twenty million dollars at the end of each fiscal year for the past two years. We're already overtaxed. That's forty-four million dollars they have available to spend on however they see fit, and I think some teacher raises would be a lot more appropriate than raising taxes for full-day kindergarten. The superintendent recently spent eighty thousand dollars for twenty days of work for a consultant, four thousand bucks a day. We can very easily save ten percent on new school construction. This building alone, we could have, would have realized roughly seven million dollars. Simple little things like that can save and add up to a whole lot of money. I recently requested information on travel-related spending, and it was unbelievable, unbelievable to me, the amount of extravagant spending. Ms. Marsh pointed one example out. There's a lot of money that's being spent that could be saved, that could be put to a whole lot better use. And here's the thing, our student enrollment declines and spending continues to increase year after year. So it's always easier to spend other people's money, but you can't keep hammering working families year after year after year. I'm asking you to show some fiscal responsibility, make some tough choices, just like families have to with their budget, help working people and retirees, and don't raise our taxes and fees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly Walker. And after Ms. Walker will be Gabriella Walton.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, city council members, and city manager Hanson. My name is Kelly Walker, and I'm the president of the Virginia Beach Education Association. I am here this evening to support the school board's request for an additional four point nine million to fully fund full-day kindergarten. The school division is requesting this funding because two years ago, city council provided only half of the amount needed to implement full-day kindergarten in Virginia Beach. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to hear the school board chairwoman share with the city council the school board's two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty budget presentation. At that presentation, the chairwoman outlined the many reasons as to why end-of-the-year unused funding cannot be used to sustain an ongoing initiative such as full-day kindergarten. I would like to point out that the school division keeps two percent in reserve funding of the total operating budget as part of sound, reputable accounting practice. Some of you might recall that in nineteen ninety-four, the school board did not practice competent fiscal budgeting practices and overspent their budget by twelve point one million dollars. It was reckless of the school board to not have planned accordingly. We cannot be placed in that situation ever again. End-of-the-year money is not a dependable source of income. Therefore, because full-day kindergarten is an ongoing initiative, using end-of-the-year funds to pay for this program is not a sound fiscal choice. Furthermore, I would like to remind council members that in two thousand and ten, the school board wanted to apply end-of-year funds to a rainy day line item because the economy had turned and times were lean. The school board was looking ahead and wanted to have funds available when funding streams from the state, from the state dried up. When the budget was presented to council, the final decision was to not return end-of-the-year funds back to the school board and instead built the Bayside Rec Center and an animal shelter. So where are we now? Due to the lingering effects of the Great Recession, a reduction in funding from the state, and a looming teacher shortage, the school division must concentrate on salary and compensation for its employees. We must ensure that our city has the best public education system possible by attracting and retaining highly qualified and experienced educators. That is why I ask the city council to fully fund full-day kindergarten. Do not force the school board to choose between two very important issues. Teacher salaries should not have to compete against the funding of full-day kindergarten. Thank you.
Gabriella Walton. And after Ms. Walton is Katherine Malli.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, city council members, and city manager Hanson. My name is Gabriella Walton. I am a sixth-grade science teacher at Princess Anne Middle, as well as vice president of the Virginia Beach Education Association. And of course, I'm a resident. I am here this evening to support the school board's request for an additional four point nine million to fully fund full-day kindergarten. Two years ago, the Virginia Beach School Board asked city council for fourteen million dollars to fund full-day kindergarten. At the time, city council members understood that ninety-nine percent of the school divisions across the Commonwealth had full-day kindergarten programs, and that Virginia Beach was one of the three divisions that does not. City council has also, at the time, understood that full-day kindergarten program for the city of Virginia Beach generates a return on the investment of three to one or even higher. This translates to three dollars saved for every one dollar invested. City council understood that an early investment in children's social, emotional, and intellectual skills means a lower grade retention and dropout rates for students later on in life. This is why, at the time, city council provided six point seven million dollars of the requested fourteen million dollars to begin implementing full-day kindergarten in our city. However, that was two years ago, and the funding for completing the implementation of full-day kindergarten, it has dried up. The school division now must address employee compensation in order to tackle the severe teacher shortage that faces our nation, our state, and our city. It's real. Just two weeks ago, our superintendent and the school board announced that the number one priority for the division is employing compensation. For the past decade, salary increases were either nonexistent or minimal. Some employees take home less pay now than they did a decade ago. I'm one of those employees. Average teacher salary in two thousand and seven was fifty-one thousand, one hundred and two dollars. In two thousand and eight, the average teacher salary was only fifty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So for eleven years of service, a teacher in Virginia Beach has only received, on average, an increase of three thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars in pay. Due to the low pay, the increase, increases in healthcare expenses, and, excuse me, and a mandated five percent Virginia retirement, dispersment teachers are now in short supply. And I can go on. So I strongly urge you to support the school board's request for the four point nine million dollars that it needs to implement full-day kindergarten so they can focus on employee compensation. Let's be that city that truly says yes to what's important. Thank you.
Katherine Malli. And then the next speaker will be Bobby Malati.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, city council members, and city manager Hanson. My name is Kathy Malli, and I am a pre-K teacher at Arrowhead Elementary. I am here this evening to support the school board's request for an additional four point nine million to fully fund full-day kindergarten. Patchwork quilt or seamless day? The half-day kindergarten program is a patchwork quilt, stitching small scraps of learning into the three-and-a-half-hour day. There is not enough time to fully explore and differentiate literacy and math instruction and allow for socialization and physical activity. In contrast, full-day kindergarten provides seamless instructional time. Students experience a regular school day schedule and participate in lunch, art, music, and physical education. There is time for remediation and exploration of concepts. There is time to talk and play. Half-day kindergarten, still in place in nine schools, does not provide sufficient time for the learning needs of our students. All kindergarten students in Virginia Beach deserve an integrated, seamless experience now, where academic instruction, cooperative play, and exposure to a variety of hands-on learning experiences spark students' imaginations and help them to develop the necessary skills to be successful in school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby Malati. After Mr. Malati is Chris Zack.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, Mr. Manager. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak. I think one of the, one of the things that I gleaned from the speakers, and it's hard to come in and be the number fourteen speaker or fifteen speaker, because after a while, those of us who are on one side of the issue or the other are singing off the same hymn note, just the way it is. But they brought up an interesting point, and one of the points was that forty percent of the children in the schools are on free and reduced lunch. Forty percent. And it takes you back to the basic question of how do you, how do you fight, how do you fight poverty? How do you lower that number? How do you change it, the outcome, for that generation and the next generation? So the one cent, I believe I'm right on that, that would fund full-day kindergarten, I believe it's five million dollars equals a penny or something, I used to know it, is well worth the expense. If one cent can make a difference in the next generation, it may not help this one, but you know it's going to help the next one. We have to be committed to this. We can't just continue to nod our heads and say, yeah, well, but we give it, no, we don't. We can do better than this. And so I believe that what I'm saying, and I have a whole script here, I've read absolutely none of it, and I'm not going to. You're welcome. I, I believe in my heart of hearts in what I'm saying, the fact that the school board asked for the money. But the one piece of interesting information that somebody came, well, what'd you do with the twenty million dollars? Fair question. What'd you do with the twenty-four million dollars? Well, I didn't know the answer to that. And so I went to a resolution, your resolution, that was updated on the ninth of October, two thousand and eighteen, and it tells you exactly what you did with the money. It tells you that six million, eight hundred thousand went to school reserve special revenue fund, two million went to risk management fund, ten million went and was re-appropriated to the CIP fund, five million, six hundred thousand went to school operations fund, for two million dollars worth of school buses, seven hundred and fifty thousand of white fleets, one million, five hundred thousand dollars worth of new whiteboards, and a million dollars for safe schools. That's where the money went. It didn't just vanish. So I thank you for the opportunity. I also thank every member of council, and especially you, Mr. Manager, for supporting "We've Heard Something in the Water." It's a great thing. Thank you.
Chris Zack.
Welcome. Honorable mayor and council, myself and many others come here tonight to ask for help. I speak to my story, as this is the one I am most familiar with, but the room is full of stories just like mine. I could bore you with the numbers that you've heard time and time again, but I'm going to take a different approach. I start my fifteenth year of service to this city as a firefighter, and my ninth year as service to the city as a master firefighter in June. Myself and many others have given blood, sweat, and tears, and parts of our souls to make this city a better, safer place. We do so many things for this city, there isn't enough time to pack it into a three-minute speech. I've written numerous emails about all our extra duties such as hazmat, tech rescue, being paramedics, marine team, I could name off a hundred others. But that's what makes us one of the best fire departments in the country. Just ask our citizens, who every year we get a ninety-nine percent approval rating from. Yet every time we ask for help with our pay, you say there will be a fix, but it never gets fixed. I'm almost fifteen years into my career, by the way, and six thousand dollars away from even the midpoint of my pay, pay range. A firefighter that made master firefighter one month ago, after I've been a master firefighter for nine years, now makes more money than I do. You ask us to run into burning buildings and save people of this city from certain death and injury at times, and they take comfort because they know we're coming, and they hang on maybe a little bit longer. We ask you for help because we're drowning in today's economy, but we're starting to wonder if your help is ever coming. So please, fix the public safety pay plan so we don't have to stand up here year after year after year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1792.28]
Thank you.
And then the next speaker is Noel Garra.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, City Council members, and City Manager Hanson. My name is Kathleen Slendy. I'm a second-grade teacher at Lonewood Elementary, and I'm adding my voice to the kindergarten issue. I'm here this evening to support the school board's request for an additional four point nine million to fund, fully fund, full-day kindergarten. Why is full-day kindergarten so important? One reason is because times have changed, and there are so many more academic expectations for our young children. Thirty years ago, the curriculum for kindergarten was based on students being only taught for about three-and-a-half hours. Over the years, the curriculum has become much more challenging. It is now similar to what was being taught to first grade thirty years ago. Those changes in curriculum reflect an expansion and expectation for a full day of instruction. As a result of this curriculum change, school districts across the Commonwealth have implemented full-day kindergarten programs to replace half-day programs. At the beginning of this year, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, ninety-nine percent of elementary schools in Virginia had full-day kindergarten, ninety-nine percent of them across our state. More than half of the elementary schools that still don't have full-day kindergarten are here in Virginia Beach. Is that what we want for our city? Right now, nine elementary schools will not have full-day kindergarten without that four point nine million dollars that the school board is requesting. That means that over one thousand of our five- and six-year-olds, those important people in our city, will be expected to learn a curriculum designed for seven hours of instruction in half that time. That means that the teachers and the staff in those elementary schools will have to work that much harder with much more pressure on them just to cover the material expected of their students in half, at that time. It also means that the parents and the families of those children have an additional pressure to make sure their child is achieving just like the other kindergartens students despite having less than half of the instructional time that's needed. Is that fair to these students? Is that fair to the teachers, to the staff? Is it fair to these families? I don't think so, and I hope that you will agree with me. I strongly urge you to support the school board's request for the four point nine million dollars it needs to implement the full-day kindergarten and make us truly a city of yes to education.
And then Jenny Davis.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager. My name is Noel Garra. I'm a proud member of the Bayside District of Virginia Beach and even a proud member of the Virginia Beach Fire Department. My first time here in front of all y'all. I want to congratulate all the new members and all those who've been re-elected officials of City Council. All of you show a great sense of dedication and commitment to ensure our beautiful city continues to grow and develop. With that being said, the public safety workers have the same dedication and commitment. Many council members ran on a platform to address certain issues within the city. One of those issues was public safety pay compression. Many times, this city's elected and appointed officials have stated that they love their public safety. Well, now is the time to show it, not just with kind words, but rather with a fair and equitable pay plan that improves the lives for those who risk their lives every day to provide this city with a sense of safety and lay claim to one of the safest cities in America. That distinction does not happen by chance. It happens because of the hard work and sacrifice made every day by each and every member of public safety. Public safety members should not have to live in the dark about their pay. A fair and equitable pay plan, quite frankly, is extremely overdue. Horizontal pay compression should be addressed quick so that pay disparity within the ranks can finally be eliminated. You've heard countless stories of members who have, within the same rank, are making significant amount of money difference doing the same job. Vertical compression should also be taken care of. When a member achieves a promotion, there is not any sense that that member should be in some cases upwards of seventeen thousand dollars, less than a subordinate, and then be told to wait three years to continue to make five thousand dollars less than any subordinate. No longer should members of public safety be asked to wait any more years for a fix for something that should have been corrected yesterday. I hope you finally vote to fix, I hope you finally vote on a plan to fix our public safety pay and stop kicking this can down the road. Thank you very much for your time here today. I want to thank every single one of you for your time in City Council. Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Jenny Davis.
Welcome.
And after Ms. Davis is George Pilgrim.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, City Council members, and City Manager Hanson. My name is Jenny Davis, and I'm here this evening to support the school board's request for an additional four point nine million dollars to fully fund full-day kindergarten. Princess Anne Elementary is where my children will go to school, which does not have full-day kindergarten. There are fifteen elementary schools left in the state to receive full-day kindergarten, and nine of them are in our city. Full-day kindergarten is as valuable and necessary to our students at Princess Anne Elementary as it is to every other student currently receiving it. To give every child in the city the same opportunities, it is important to offer them the same chance to succeed with the benefits of full-day kindergarten. I have been a proud citizen of Virginia Beach my entire life, and I feel so strongly about it that I've chosen to raise my family here, giving them the best. It is a great disappointment that you only want to extend the best to eighty-five percent of the city and leave the rest of us to wing it. Our students are ready to learn. Our teachers are ready to deliver the program, and our school building is ready to receive it. We just need the support we are asking for today to keep our children rising to the excellent standards set forth by our great city to continue growing and thriving as a competitive community with a bright future. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the next speaker will be Michelle Riley.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, ladies and gentlemen, City Council, Mr. Hanson. My name is Max Gonano, and I'm a Virginia Beach citizen and a firefighter in the VBFD. For at least the last two decades, Virginia Beach Public Safety has lobbied you every year for vertical and horizontal compression adjustments. There were some attempts at fixing this along the way, and some of these issues were addressed. However, for the majority of the master firefighters, master police officers, and senior paramedics, predictable progression through the pay range eludes them. There's no reason that someone with over a decade's worth of service to the city is at or near the bottom of his or her pay range. What we are asking you to do is adopt a system that is simple, fair, sustainable, and predictable. This can be accomplished with what Bill Bailey mentioned and within our current pay system. That is fair, that is equitable, and that is the approach we ask of you. This three-six-nine midpoint at ten approach fixes horizontal and vertical compression where it starts, which is in the very early years of the employee's career. The predictability gained by this approach for the employees is valuable to both the morale of the organization and the operational readiness and quality of work, as each of these progressions is tied to steps and training the employees must take to achieve the progression. We ask this of you. Thank you for your time.
Michelle Riley. Michelle Riley. And then the next speaker is Conrad Shisvinter.
Welcome.
Thank you. First of all, bless y'all's hearts, this is not a budget, this is a spending plan. We have top-heavy salaries in this city. We have city manager and a school board superintendent who make more than the Secretary of Defense. We have STUR office employees who are pulling in six-figure salaries. We're going to get a new city hall. We can spend money on the VIB district. We can give grants to startups. We can waste money on Bitcoin failure businesses. We can do a dome site with a wave pool and a theater and condos and experiential retail. We can have a sportsplex and Taj Mahal schools with lead standards like the one that we're standing in, which is a very nice school, but seriously. We had enough money to fund all-day kindergarten. If it was a priority, they should have made that a priority in the budget that they had. I sat in on y'all's retreat for two days and heard every one of you agree that stormwater, public safety, and our education systems were the most important things in this city. You should be able to do those things within the budget that you have. I have three daughters. I live on a fifty thousand dollar a year budget. I can't afford lobster dinners and steaks and this and that and the other thing. I have to live within my means. Y'all have a two-point-two billion-dollar budget, and you can't find a way to live within your means. That makes absolutely no sense to me. This people's budget that was worked on so hard by council members Moss and Abbott and citizens here, why do citizens have to sit and work on this? This is y'all's job. I'm sorry. I don't mean to be disrespectful, but respect is a two-way street. And when you keep reaching into people's pockets, when we can't afford to keep paying for all of these wonderful things that y'all want to do, who is supposed to support all these things when we get punished every time we go out to eat in this city, or every time we go do anything that's an amusement, we have to pay extra taxes to even do that? Who's going to support all of these fun things when the people who live here all year long can't even afford to pay their own bills? Tourists aren't going to keep this place going. Tourists aren't the one that go door-knocking and campaigning for all of you when you run for office. So please just stick within your means. Please vote yes on the people's budget and no to a spending plan.
Conrad Shisvinter. And then Alfred Wallace.
Hello, Virginia Beach City Government. It's Conrad, your voice for Virginia independent politics. And city government's word today is gall. And gall means bold and prudent behavior. And my, my, do you guys have some gall? The city is asking for more of our income. It wants to up personal property taxes and real estate taxes, all for more of our money, to then do more of the same can-kicking. I thought I had enough of all that gall last year. When my brother was fleeced by the city on water and sewage fees, he was overcharged because of a pool. I wanted and ran for a city council seat exactly because of a city indifference like that, and I forgot. This time, the city wants to up water, solid waste, and stormwater fees too. Oh, you sorry, sorry sorts who don't listen to us. City council must listen. My ears are wide open, and I'm watching. And until next time, thank you, guys.
Alfred Wallace. And after Mr. Wallace will be William Duke.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Woods, and City Manager Dave Hanson, and members of council. I'm Mel Wallace, and I live in the Bayside Borough. After reviewing part of the CIP project, the budget, there are a lot of flood mitigation projects yet to be done, and a few of the projects have been broken down into smaller units stretched out over a much longer period of time. My concern is the allocation of existing funds, not enough being allocated to these projects that are now critically needed. Another concern is the maintenance backlog that would alleviate some of the reoccurring flooding concerns we keep hearing in the evening news. As a homeowner and a taxpayer, I'm concerned that priorities on stormwater drainage maintenance are not being addressed sufficiently. This is a core function of the city government, and I do understand limited funding means limited progress. It does no good to have full-day kindergarten if the schools and roads are flooded out. It does no good to build new projects if the roads are prone to flooding. I heard countless times during the last political campaign season, flooding mitigations is a top priority. Please make that happen. Reallocate more of the existing funding on maintenance and repairs of the stormwater drainage system. Reallocate existing funding to accelerate the manner of effort to resolve reoccurring flooding issues. There is a backlog of ditches and canals that need dredging. Sea level rise is here to stay. Fix the flooding issues first. If you don't do enough, the economy suffers. We suffer when homes flood and workers are not able to get to work. Fix the economy, fix the flooding problem. Yes, I know, it will take several years. After that, then grow the economy, build the sports center, the dome site, the rec center, but not before. In summary, in summary, don't make living in Virginia Beach difficult. Many of us are on fixed retirement, fixed income, and our finances are strained. As part of government's core function, prioritize and reallocate existing monies for the needed stormwater projects and critical maintenance without increasing taxes and fees. And I request you consider the people's budget as the first step. Thank you for your time.
William Duke. And after Mr. Duke is Christine Underwood.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. It's a pleasure to see you all here this evening, and I'm happy to speak to you. My name is Bill Duke, and I live down in Hunt Club Forest. I'm here to talk to you today just briefly about a disgusting subject, which is garbage. The Waste Management Fee Increase, I understand in this budget is a nine percent increase. I could be wrong, I think that's correct. And some of that money goes to the Waste Management Enterprise Fund, which will purchase new vehicles and equipment and facilities. Does that fee increase provide enough revenue to issue future debt? If it does, would it go strictly to facilities and the like, brick-and-mortar facilities? Or would it go to collect trash? I don't know. Hopefully not. A modest suggestion is that I don't believe, people here like paying a lot of separate fees in addition to their taxes. That's a general sentiment that may be true. Maybe it's true, I don't know. I own a nineteen ninety-nine Suburban, and every year I got to take it down to the DMV, and some poor child has to come out and find all the scratches, and where is there, where there's a dent, and what's fallen off. This year, to avoid me paying my personal property automobile tax, right? So have you considered, or would you consider, the possibility of eliminating all of these fees and putting it all into the personal property tax? And then you could divvy up these funds as you see fit. That's a suggestion, I don't know whether you like it or not. And one more thing, this is quite an aside, I'm a retired geologist and university professor, and currently I buy and flip houses, and my family and I work on them personally ourselves. So I know a little bit about what I'm about to suggest, which is that an absolutely free way for you to mitigate future flooding disasters in new developments here in Virginia Beach. All it takes is a regulation. One, regulation. There are like fifty thousand or five hundred thousand regulations in the building code, right? So this is just one thing. All new developments in Virginia Beach should be built on crawl spaces that are five feet above grade. It will incur some additional expense to the home. There should also be storm vents built into the crawl space. And when it floods, that development is not likely to have billions of dollars of insurance claims. It's just a bug I'd like to put in your ear, and I thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Christine Underwood. And after Ms. Underwood is Elaine Fecetti.
Honorable Mayor and members of City Council, my name is Christine Underwood, and I'm a senior at First Colonial High School. The past two years, I've had the privilege The past two years, I've had the privilege to serve as a student advocate to the Virginia Beach City Public Library Board. I'd like to thank you not only for the opportunity to speak in front of you today, but for the numerous opportunities that the Virginia Beach Public Library Board offers every citizen. Our libraries go above and beyond to serve the needs of the city. I'm proud, I am proud to share a few of the current programs offered to all ages in every geographic region. Children's opera sessions allow some of our youngest library members the ability to come and listen to professional musicians, play their instruments and learn about possibilities to expand their musical education. The 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten is an early literacy program that encourages parents to read their children, read to their children and record progress made in comprehension. Our teen librarians have been able to partner with local public schools to provide students with instructional and activities during classes, lunches and after school. For older audiences, library staff provides personal guidance on technology and information about using library resources for college and career planning. I myself was first exposed to technological resources such as computers, iPads and 3D printers through the library system. As a young child, my grandparents took me to programs and seminars offered by my local library. I not only learned how to apply computers and printers in school, but discovered many different areas of personal interest. Whether it was learning about the environment, creating an art project, or simply having a story read aloud to me, the library has been, has been the source to many wonderful memories. With your support, these programs can continue to promote not only literacy, but the ability of the average citizen to learn outside of the classroom. Libraries have become an important home, not only for books, but for learning how to apply available resources and cultural activities to everyday life. Beyond this, libraries provide an outlet for community development and togetherness. Thank you for your dedication to our program and what we envision for the future of the community.
Thank you.
And then the next speaker will be Tom Bielly.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer and council members. My name is Elaine Fecetti. Many of us are here tonight to voice our strong opposition to the proposed budget. We've watched the informal sessions with you, where the budget has been presented to you by category, piece by piece, with very nice PowerPoint presentations showing us the endless possibilities of our city. It kind of reminded me of a timeshare sales pitch. If you pay just a little bit more here and a little bit more there, you're going to have paradise. But the reality for you is, as it is for all people, is that you cannot have everything you want when you want it. The budget presented to you was drafted by the city manager and it also includes the school budget. And here's the thing, the city manager and the school superintendent were not elected by us nor hired by us. You were. You are the stewards of our tax dollars. It's incumbent upon you to make our essential services, including safety, stormwater maintenance and even teacher compensation, make those, meet those needs first and foremost. Do not treat them like an add-on or a tax at the end. Tonight, you're being presented with information you haven't heard in your budget sessions. You're hearing about poverty levels, reduced school lunches, the number of people in our community in the last 18 months, almost 40,000 that have had their water services disconnected, a decline in population. And frankly, all of these details should shock the senses. They must be considered by you in order to get a clear picture of what is right for the city and the citizens during your budget reconciliation process. Many of you campaigned on the idea of making Virginia Beach a community for a lifetime. I have two kids, they're 13 and 15. I've already told them, I love you, but when you're 18, go away. And not for that reason. But go unless you're planning on being the city manager or school superintendent, you cannot afford to come back here and establish your career and your lives. As Councilman Rouse and Afellah Hokey has said so rightly several times, you were elected to make the tough decisions, so make them. It's time to do your due diligence and adopt a budget that is for the people. A people's budget exists thanks to Councilman Moss and Abbott and a team of citizens. In the people's version, there's more money for public safety, pay compression, storm drain maintenance and an increase in the debt capacity to tackle flooding projects sooner. All of this without raising taxes and fees, so what's not to consider? It's your job to look at this budget and look at it carefully, to do the job you were elected to do, not just to brush it off for political differences. Many in this city have to balance needs versus wants every day, but if you keep going at the rate you're going, many people are going to have to start balancing whether they have this need or that need. And they're going to have to start making the tough choices. It's outrageous. Everyone will have to cut, but you should be the ones to cut first. Be a city of yes and vote yes for the people's budget.
And then the next speaker is Joe Pelosi.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and city manager. The mayor said that we need to grow the economy and not keep going back to the taxpayer. So, tell me, when is this going to happen? Apparently not in this budget. How many times are you going to pick our pockets? When is all the money you throw at the oceanfront going to pay off? How about you wait till it does? Meanwhile, you should not be expanding the size and scope of government with our population only growing at .5%, while the budget is growing at 3.6%. You should be reducing the growth of government through attrition in order to not raise taxes. I beg you to vote no to the city manager's budget and yes to the Abbott-Moss people's budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
And after Mr. Pelosi is Greg Purlich.
Welcome. Good evening. I'm here to ask for your support of funding the Public Safety Pay Plan. I was hired in 2007. Since then, I've been at the very bottom or close to the bottom of the pay scale my entire career. The city manager's recommendation is far from a solution. It only addresses supervisors and people who have yet to make master firefighter. And his proposal, a three-year employee would be able to achieve a new career progression. This would put that three-year employee roughly 9% behind where I am right now, even though I have nine years of seniority and I'm a master firefighter. Conversely, supervisors I was either hired with or hired after me are making roughly 43% more. Mr. Hanson said that in his proposal, an employee should be between the second and third quartile of their pay range in their 10th year. Well, in my 12th year, I'm still in the first quartile. A current three-year employee should hit his midpoint in their ninth or 10th year. I will hit my midpoint in my 17th year. Public safety should not be a field where how you are compensated is based solely on what year you are fortunate, or in my case, unfortunate enough to be hired. Many of us were hired in what you call the lean years. We were told just to hold on and we're still holding. I could continue to spew numbers, but we all know the issue. You have acknowledged public safety pay is a priority in this budget. Well, in our job, when we go to a fire, we have priorities too. If someone is trapped in a house fire, our priority is always to go rescue them. We don't just stand in the yard and talk about it, we take action. Now is the time to get out of the yard, so to speak, take action and fully fund the Public Safety Pay Plan.
Thank you. Welcome.
And then the next speaker is Jimmy Cross.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address the council this evening. My name is Greg Furlik. I am the principal of Rosemont Forest Elementary School. Yesterday was an exciting day in elementary schools across the district. It was kindergarten registration day, the day when rising kindergarteners come to their neighborhood school to get a jumpstart on registering for the coming year. Students have the opportunity to visit classrooms, take a ride on a school bus and hear a story while parents complete paperwork. I can't tell you how many questions I received on why our school is not scheduled to be a full day and how many stories I heard about possibly having to enroll their child in a school other than their neighborhood school because of hardship or of not having, of us not having a full-day program. I've come here tonight in an effort to make sure council members are as informed as possible when it comes time to address funding of the school division's initiative for full-day kindergarten in all of its schools and maybe highlight some issues you may not have considered. For example, how many of you thought of the parents who spoke to me this morning who may have, who may have to try and enroll their child in a school other than one that belongs to their neighborhood? Maybe even forcing siblings who should be riding the school bus together to attend separate schools? Or families who may need to try and juggle whether their child attends a PM or an AM kindergarten session just so they can make ends meet? I actually received this email this morning that read in part, "Dear Mr. Furlik, I am the mother of a kindergarten student who will start school in the fall. I learned this morning that the zone assigned to us is a morning session. I must ask for my son to attend an afternoon session instead. I cannot afford to pay for a daycare to watch him after a morning session. If he attends an afternoon session, I will be able to arrange for daycare and his father will be able to pick him up when his work shift is over. I truly hope I can accommodate her request, but I will not know until sometime this summer when I have a better idea of what class sizes are going to look like." And this is a story that gets repeated all over this school division. Another story, I suspect many of you are like me, you lived in the same home for years, you sent your kids to the same schools and you're tied to your community. But that's not necessarily the story for, or the norm for a student in Virginia Beach. The mobility index for my school is a little over 22%, which means that almost a quarter of my students turn over in the course of a year. And that's a pretty average number, but we have schools in Virginia Beach that are close to or even over 40%. And I bring this up because every year I have kindergarteners who parent, whose parents move into the Rosemont Forest school zone, coming from schools which are full-day. I get to see their faces when they register in my office and then I have to tell them that their child is being cut from a full-day program to a half-day program. Often, these families have little choice about where they are living. I know that part of the discussion tonight is the fairness and an increase in taxes, but I wonder if you've stopped to consider the de facto tax burden that not having a full-day kindergarten imposes on our families. Many families budget and cut corners to pay for daycare and they make it work, but imagine that you're forced to move into a school zone without a full-day kindergarten. Well, for all intents and purposes, you've seen your taxes go up by hundreds of dollars a month as you have to suddenly find childcare. One way or another, our citizens are going to have to pay and the tax increase is a burden for all of us to carry. One of the first lessons I learned as an administrator was you make choices in the best interests of children and all I'm asking is that you hold yourself to that same standard.
Thank you. Welcome.
After Jimmy Cross will be Jeannie Baker.
I don't usually favor tax increases. I'm not a wealthy man, but I'm not a selfish one either. During the last election cycle, the voters were clear. Fixing flooding, pay compression for public safety and education were the top priorities. These are the things you ran on, Mr. Mayor, and I support you. I hope we can avoid a tax increase this year, but investments in our future are, for the most part, worthwhile. Besides Hurricane Matthew, I saw the Midwest floods of 93 and I can tell you, water is the perfect enemy. It is relentless and discriminate and just like relatives you didn't want showing up at your door, it usually takes money to get them to go away. I thought my neighborhood was immune to flooding because we're on higher ground, but I recently checked and inspected my neighborhood's stormwater infrastructure and while I'm no engineer, what I found was alarming. By necessity, we are about to embark on the most massive public works project in our city's history and unless we find new revenue sources, we may have to tighten our belts a little more. Years of neglect and other factors have caught up and now we must fix the problems and not the blame. My neighborhood is at risk and I hope you can help before it's too late. But I would simply say that one lady spoke about the animal shelter issue that came up a few years ago and I remember the then superintendent sent out a phone message to all the parents, telling them how terrible it's going to be and how your child's education is going to suffer if we don't get this funding or if they take this funding away from us. If you're watching at home, if you're a school teacher, if you have a child in public school or you're a kid yourself, listen to me like you've never listened to anybody before. Any politician, any bureaucrat who tells you that your child's future is going to be imperiled because their budget is not funded is lying through their teeth. Our public schools are well-funded and if you're going to tell me that out of the 900 million plus dollars they get, 38 people as assistant administrators, Beverly? Are you kidding me? The only one you don't have an administrator for is common sense. And I couldn't find that at the school board if I went across the street and got a search warrant. Look, you can find $5 million in your budget. I know you can. And to the teachers who want full-day kindergarten, I don't disagree with you, but I would tell you this, if your school board is telling you, no, they can't, ask them why they can't. It's because they're not willing to do the work necessary to find the money they need to accomplish this critical goal. Thank you.
And after Ms. Baker will be Sharon Schubridge.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Hi. My name is Jeannie Baker. I have lived in Virginia Beach since I've been in junior high school, where I attended our public schools. I have a business and own property. My children attended Virginia Beach Public Schools and now my grandchild does. The future and well-being of Virginia Beach is important to me. I reviewed the special formal session agenda that Mayor Dyer read at the beginning. There are 11 bullet points on this. Six of them begin with the word increases, over half. It is always increased taxes. We can do better than this. Surely, we can find people who have problem-solving skills and intellect to work a budget without defaulting to raising taxes. These tax and fee increases just drip, drip, drip and taxes only go up, up, up. Light rail was voted down, yet we have a tax on that, which has not been repealed. Will the 1.5% real estate tax increase go to flooding issues? Will this suggested increase in tax go to a fund solely for flooding issues? We have taxes for which we are told are for one thing, but then goes to something else. Not only does this budget propose more real estate tax, our real estate assessments go up. I believe they've gone up every year for the past six years, so this real estate tax increase will effectively be higher than 1.5%. Also, as I entered, I was giving a cop, given a copy of the proposed plan, I think this is trying to sell it, but if you look in the front of it, Real Estate Tax Rate History, fiscal year 2012, it was 89 cents per hundred dollars. And now it would become, under this budget, 1.0175. I want to reiterate that I believe our city council should be comprised of our brightest citizens who are able to work a complicated budget without continually defaulting to raise taxes. Quite frankly, defaulting to raising taxes seems weak and lacks discipline. Last year, we had a budget proposal offered by John Moss, Jessica Abbott and Bobby Dyer. That budget would not have increased taxes. I am thankful to Louis Jones, who rolled up his sleeves and looked at that as well and council was able to at least get part of that budget in the final budget. Again, this year, John Moss and Jessica Abbott have a buzzle, budget proposal that will not increase taxes. I have faith in each of you, that each of you can really show us, citizens, that you can produce what you put your mind and heart into it, be a star to your constituents, show us that you have our backs and are conservative when taking from our wallets. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And then after Ms. Schubridge will be Michelle Young.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer and Vice Mayor Wood and city council members. I am Sharon Schubridge and I am the principal of Kingston Elementary School and I am here before you on behalf of the 62 five-year-olds and their parents who registered yesterday at Kingston for kindergarten. I extend an invitation to any of you to come at any time to see Kingston and to see my amazing teachers at work in their half-day program. Kindergarten students have 66 language arts objectives and 24 math objectives, in addition to a handful of science and social studies concepts they need to master before the end of the year. Students need to know their upper and lowercase letters and then apply that understanding to writing a complete sentence that matches a picture. Students have to be able to read a book and demonstrate comprehension of what the story was about. Students have to be able to rhyme, identify syllables like pop, corn, identify and create word families, give them an at and they can say sat, they can say cat, fat, bat, et cetera. And I haven't even given, gotten to the oral communication skills or the research skills the students need to demonstrate. Students have to count Students have to count orally using one-to-one correspondence, count forward to 100 and backwards from 10. Students have to identify sets of objects as having more, fewer, or the same, and then compare groups from greatest to least or least to greatest. Students have to be able to demonstrate an understanding of one more, one less, and then identify a number before or after without counting, given a number between 0 and 10. I haven't even gotten to geometry measurement and probability. They have to think about the world around them and connect seasonal changes with choices they might make, like what to wear and what activities they would do outside. They need to demonstrate their understanding of how a magnet works and how water flows. They need to understand what it means to be a good citizen, including big concepts such as the importance of voting or of service, and the concrete skills like saying thank you and asking please. They have to identify US symbols like the Statue of Liberty, the Bald Eagle, and the White House. And in a half-day program, the expectations are exactly the same. In a half-day program, students have all of that, except the students don't have PE or art. Students don't have designated time for recess or play, and the teachers do not have planning or lunch without creative scheduling of their administration. We expect our students in the half-day program to learn and grow and demonstrate the same competencies that the students in a full-day program have to demonstrate. There is no time for social-emotional development unless the teacher builds it into his or her learning plans. How can it be that we live in a place where all-day kindergarten is not the norm? How can it be that we are not ensuring that the first experience our students have in public school is not their best experience? How can it be we are limiting our opportunity to establish a love of learning and to pique their curiosity for what is to come? How can it be that we are not standing up and saying, "We will take care of this, and we will fight for this, and we will fight for them"? They matter the most. Kindergarten is the most important foundation, and while I'm not a builder, I'm pretty sure a house built on a shaky foundation will fall. Thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Michelle Young. And after Ms. Young.
Welcome.
Is Michelle Miller.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Michelle Young. I have been teaching for Virginia Beach City Public Schools for over 30 years. Most of my experience has been in first grade and kindergarten. Presently, I am a kindergarten teacher at Red Mill Elementary, where kindergarten is still a half-day program. I am here tonight to ask you to find the funds within the city's budget so that all elementary schools in Virginia Beach may offer full-day kindergarten starting in the fall of 2019. As a half-day kindergarten teacher, I find it very difficult to complete many of the learning activities our children enjoy and need with only three hours of school. Most days, our children are asking to stay longer so they can continue learning. We work very hard to ensure our children are ready for the demands of first grade, but we know we could do better if we had more time with our little ones. A full-day kindergarten program can and does offer more time for children to become proficient with critical thinking, communication, collaboration, creativity, and citizenship. Our children enjoy problem-based learning activities, but having enough time to complete them is always an issue in a three-hour program. Recently, we took a nature walk and noticed that we did not see many bees. After discussion and research, we found that many of our honeybees are disappearing, which is not good for our world. The children learned that this is called colony collapse disorder. We invited a local beekeeper to come share her knowledge with us. After her presentation, we decided to help the bees by planting flowers. These activities kept our children engaged and helped spark much curiosity about their world. They are becoming great problem solvers. I know that if we had more hours in our day, we could do more of this problem-based learning that we know is exciting, motivating, and beneficial to students' critical and creative thinking. Every kindergarten program in this city, whether it is a half-day or full-day, expects their children to make the same amount of progress and learn the same amount of curriculum. While we do it in three hours, other schools have the benefit of a longer day. We do our best to ensure that they are getting all that they need to be ready for first grade. However, there is no denying that our programming is different, and students in a half-day class lose out on opportunities in comparison to students in full-day programs. It is not equitable for most of our kindergarten students to reap the benefits of a full-day schedule while others are left out. Our three-hour day is always rushed. I can tell you, I love it. Our little ones deserve the best. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Michelle Miller. And after Ms. Miller will be Megan Teresco.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Dyer and City Council members. My name is Michelle Miller, principal of Red Mill Elementary. This is my fourth year as principal of Red Mill and my 15th year working in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I'm here to ask for your support of our school board's request to fund the full implementation of full-day kindergarten across Virginia Beach schools. As my kindergarten teacher just explained, all students deserve the opportunities and advantages of full-day kindergarten. What my kindergarten teachers accomplish in three hours and 10 minutes a day is amazing. However, there is no way they can possibly provide all the opportunities afforded to students in a full-day kindergarten program. Every student deserves this opportunity. Maybe you already agree with that, and you believe every child deserves full-day kindergarten. Maybe your opposition to an increase in the real estate tax to fund this is because you believe the school division should be able to find the money within its current budget to finish funding this initiative. But I ask you, please, to consider that the current proposed school budget includes a 3% teacher raise, a raise that is profoundly needed and long overdue, because I can guarantee you, we are not eating lobster lunches, we barely have time to eat lunch. Finding money within our proposed school division budget would undoubtedly affect the ability of our school division to provide the modest raise to our employees. You don't have to look far to see or hear the news stories, both locally and across the nation, highlighting the ever-increasing demands placed on teachers, the growing teacher frustration and burnout, and the decreasing number of college students that are even entering the field of education. In the past two years, we as administrators have begun to truly feel the shortage of qualified teacher applicants here in Virginia Beach. If this trend continues, we will quickly see its effect on educational outcomes. Since moving to Virginia Beach in 2004, I have always been proud of our school system, frequently bragging about BBCPS to family and friends. If we as a city want to continue to be able to boast about our school system and our high quality of life, we must do what is right for every child, which includes providing full-day kindergarten at every school, and we must honor, respect, and compensate our educators so we have the greatest teaching staff possible. Do not make the school system have to choose between these two impossible choices. I am not a big government advocate, and I believe in fiscal accountability, but what I also believe in is the power of education. And I want to live and work in a city that finds the money to fund proactive measures like education. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Megan Teresco. And then the next speaker is Teri Brough.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, and community members. My name is Megan Teresco. I am a homeowner in the city of Virginia Beach and a working mother of three children, two whom already attend Red Mill and one whom I registered for kindergarten there yesterday. My husband and I had to wrestle with the decision of whether or not to register our third child, Kate, due to the half-day program at Red Mill. Katie is four years old and will be five on May 2nd. She has been attending preschool for the past two years, and while we see potential in Katie, I see her desire to learn like her older siblings. Her academic ability is lacking despite her attending preschool and my husband and I working with her at home. For students like our daughter, whom are struggling academically but not enough for them to qualify for the extended-day program, the half-day kindergarten program puts them at a disadvantage already. The half-day program's pace is too fast. Each and every minute is accounted for, and literacy and mathematic topics have to be taught quickly, allowing for very little time for reteaching. The students get no social time to work on social skills due to rigorous academic needs of this fast-paced half-day curriculum. There's no time to build friendships and be a child while learning. Kindergarten is a child's first exposure to school, and instead of it being an engaging, interactive time, which leaves them feeling successful and strong, school is not fun and leaves many children, I'm fearing like Katie, to feel defeated and embarrassed while they struggle to keep up with their peers. Kindergarten is the time to learn how to adjust to a full day of academics and build stamina, not first grade. Our children are not getting the strong foundation that they need and that their peers in their neighboring schools are getting just because of where they live in our county. Academically glazing over information due to time constraints is not preparing our children for success in future grades. I ask you, what will this look like in third grade when they start to take our state tests? How many students will have to be referred for special ed services just because they weren't given the same kindergarten program of their peers? Virginia Beach City Public Schools' mission statement, as seen on the homepage of their website, is to put students first, seek growth, be open to change, and do great work together. So I ask you, by not providing all students in Virginia Beach access to all-day kindergarten, are we truly putting all of the students in our county first? Or are we showing the students who attend the nine schools not selected for full-day kindergarten that we are not willing to put them first yet? Thank you.
Teri Brough. And after Ms. Brough will be Scott Miller.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, and City Council members. Thank you for taking the time this evening to hear from so many community members. My name is Teri Brough, and I am the principal at Lynn Haven Elementary. Over the last six years, I have served as principal at two different elementary schools in Virginia Beach, where I've seen both half-day and full-day kindergarten programs in action. I come tonight to speak to the benefits of all students in Virginia Beach to receive equitable access to full-day kindergarten. Waiting additional years to fund full-day kindergarten would be a disservice, not only to our students, but also to our community. For the last two years, Virginia Beach City Public Schools has earned the distinction of 100% accredited. This recognition comes with a lot of hard and hard work from our teachers. Teachers deserve not only to have a raise of compensation that our school board is recommending, but to also have more time with students, to prepare them for the rigorous standards set forth by the Virginia Department of Education. Some of you may be thinking, if we manage to receive 100% accreditation with half-day kindergarten in many schools, the last two years, and all of our schools 100%, while we had half-day in many of our schools, then why make the shift to full-day in all of our schools? And here's why. Our standards of accreditation, as outlined by the Virginia Department of Education, have changed for next school year. Additionally, this year, our students will be tested on new math standards and next year on new reading standards. Over the years, educational standards have become more rigorous, and each new test designed for our students has proved to be more complex and challenging. There are many unknowns as to how our students will perform on these new standards and if schools will meet accreditation. We cannot afford to maintain half-day kindergarten for any of our schools. Every kindergarten student in Virginia Beach City Public Schools needs full-day to access the rigorous curriculum. Kindergarten is very different than when I and many of you attended. Today, our students, as many of my colleagues have described tonight, they leave kindergarten as readers and writers while using critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and creativity, while also learning how to be an effective citizen. This cannot be accomplished with fidelity in a half-day program. Virginia Beach is a city where families seek housing because of the quality of our school division. Providing funding for full-day kindergarten is one way we can provide an equitable access to all students and move in the right direction to maintain 100% accreditation, keeping our city a top choice for families. Thank you for making it happen. Whether it is looking at programs to move funding or whatever it takes, to make sure for our children they're successful, it will pay off for our community, and that is priceless. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Scott Miller. And after Mr. Miller will be Reed Greenman.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, distinguished members of council, and Mr. Hanson. My name's Scott Miller. I live in Windsor Oaks neighborhood. This is the first time I've been able to speak in front of council, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so. And I really have a lot of respect for you guys sitting through events like this for as long as you have, and for taking the abuse that you're getting. I was never really interested in the budget until my house flooded back from Matthew. And Mr. Hanson, you take a lot of grief. I'm probably going to pile some more on this evening, but I want to say thank you for what you did to clean up the neighborhood, keeping the shelters open and getting the trash out. So thank you very much for that. One of the things, I have a nine-year-old daughter, and I tell her all the time, I don't really appreciate being lied to or misled. And I would say the same thing to council. I definitely don't like to read about deception, especially when we have to get it from FOIA, FOIA'd emails. I'm not going to dwell too much on public schools. I think we've heard enough from both sides, but one of the things that kind of makes me angry is when I'm reading about tens of millions of dollars over the past couple of years that have been under-executed for personnel, and then I hear about, you know, now we're asking for more money to pay for teacher raises. I fully support teacher raises, but I would submit that the school board doesn't have its priorities where it should be, and if a priority is raises, then why shouldn't they fund that first? Again, when we also look at expenditures, you know, we've seen or heard credit card expenditures and things like that. Again, I would suggest that before you give them money, I would ask them, you know, really take a hard look at what they're doing with that money before you just hand it over. Especially when those tens of millions of dollars over several years are locked by the schools, when they could be put to things like stormwater mitigation or other projects, like that money could be reallocated by you to take care of other projects. I saw canal dredging over the past year in my neighborhood, and I want to say thank you for that. But I would submit that drainage into those canals is faulty. The drainage pipes going in are too deep. When the wind blows, it just blows water back right up into the drains, and then the streets don't drain. Drainage is insufficient, the pipes are old, they're too small, and the streets are no longer graded sufficiently to force the water into those drains. So in my neighborhood, I realize it would cause, or make a requirement to dig up the roads, but I'm willing to live through that if it means that I don't have water coming into my house anymore. And it's not just my neighborhood. We have flooding just from wind, right? We saw that over this past weekend and over a couple of weekends ago. We're pumping water from one flooded area into another, and that's going into other people's houses. And then, so just don't throw money at projects just for the optics, you know, really think about where that money's going. On the budget website, it says safeguarding the city's single largest revenue, which is real estate, is important to the long-term viability of the city. Well, if that's the case, when people are priced out of their homes because of high flood insurance premiums and property values plummet, where's that revenue going to come from? So if there's priorities, you know, let's fund those first, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Reed Greenman.
Welcome.
And after Mr. Greenman is Mary Terrell.
Good evening, members of city council, city manager, spore. You've heard a lot of information, spore. Hanson, can't tell the difference. You've heard a lot of information, facts, and numbers. I read the budget every year. This is probably the 20th year I've come before you. I've got other things to do at my time. You should be doing this. So I'm going to address this first issue. Those of you that are elected, he works for you. It's your job to tell him to give you a budget that we can afford and that meets the needs that you're responsible for providing, such as keeping floodwater out of people's homes. That's your job. Those of you that are new, Sabrina, Erin, that's what you're there to do. Mr. Hanson, he's failing you. That is obvious. You've heard it from Mr. Bailey and the police. 20 years you've tried to deal with this pay compression. Mr. Moss and Councilman Abbott put together a people's budget last year and this year that addresses the issue, and you're still kicking the can down the road. Your city manager, who's your employee, is not doing his job. This budget is a spending plan, not a budget. We're going to be paying attention. You guys need to get yourself a better city manager, because this budget is unacceptable. Tax, fee increases, endless projects. We're sick of it. Now, about this con job, I could be up here all night, I only have three minutes. I've heard so much BS about this full-day kindergarten. You heard a teacher and a principal from Red Mill Elementary. You want to know something? My daughter graduated from all Virginia Beach Public Schools with honors and went on to be quite successful from Red Mill Elementary with a half-day of kindergarten. You know, what a bunch of crap. In a $900 million budget, they can't come up with $5 million to stop raising our taxes? You need to tell them no. Tell them no. Your city manager, who's your employee, is not doing his job. This budget is a spending plan, not a budget. We're going to be paying attention. You guys need to get yourself a better city manager, because this budget is unacceptable. Tax fee increases, endless projects. We're sick of it. Now, about this con job, I could be up here all night, I only have three minutes. I've heard so much BS about this full-day kindergarten. You heard a teacher and a principal from Red Mill Elementary. You want to know something? My daughter graduated from all Virginia Beach public schools with honors and went on to be quite successful from Red Mill Elementary with a half-day of kindergarten. You know, what a bunch of crap. In a $900 million budget, they can't come up with $5 million to stop raising our taxes? You need to tell them no. Tell them no. Prioritize. The teachers want raises, I agree with that. Stop wasting money on things you shouldn't be wasting it on, like lead buildings that cost twice as much as they should. Taj Mahal schools, very lovely, not needed. We endlessly, year after year, you guys put wants ahead of needs and then come to us and raise our taxes and fees to pay for what should have been paid for in the first place. I'm not going to go through all the facts and the figures and the numbers that I have in here. I did hear one particular firefighter say, quote, "We're drowning in today's economy." Yeah, so are we. Stop it. Do not increase taxes and fees. Use this budget. Fund the stormwater faster and get rid of the fluff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Terrell.
Welcome.
And then the next speaker is Susan Hobbs.
You guys still awake? Ready to hear me?
Good.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Dyer and council. I'm Mary Terrell, and I've lived in Sandbridge for the last few years. I'm just now getting acquainted with the Virginia Beach City Council's version of government for the people, so bear with me on this. I also have a couple of rental homes in Sandbridge, so you all know all the extra taxes that we pay with that. Talk about tax enough already, right? You all focused on prioritizing stormwater management while campaigning, yet this isn't even on the top of your list for funding. You also said that you wouldn't raise our taxes. Even a fifth grader can figure out the mismatched concepts here, even with half-day kindergarten. You should all be focused on citizens that reside here. We're the ones that elected you, not the tourists and the special interests that you pander to. We should get the good deals and the tax breaks. We shouldn't be funding anything that does not benefit us directly, using my tax money to fund a concert, arenas, another water park. It's ludicrous. Do the taxpayers want more visitors anyway? Our infrastructure can't handle it the way that it is. You say those visitors make us money. When? Where? When does it come into our city and fix our floodwaters? But you're raising our tax money so that we can accommodate them. What about us? Last week, Sandbridge was flooded once again. Couldn't get out, had to go through the base. I keep hearing about this nice fancy road that we're going to get. If you just fixed the flooding problem, we wouldn't need a new road at taxpayer expense. It's not a new problem either, so clearly our representation has been absent or ineffectual for a long time. So, Sandbridge tax money. Some stays in Sandbridge for the beach, no problem with that. What I have a problem with is our TIF. It has a surplus of $7 to $9 million for the last 12 years. Yep, all that's extra. Guess where it goes? Back to the Sandbridge taxpayer? Nope, it doesn't. Four million of it goes back to the school board, and there's actually a line item on the school board's budget for Sandbridge money. Yep, can't make that up. So you guys just divvy it up as you see fit. Divvy it all up. It's inappropriate, the whole TIF, the mismanagement of the funds, but that's a topic for a different venue and a different forum. It does fit here, though, with the outrageous school board asking for more money. How does the school board actually have a line item? Again, we already talked about that, I can't make it up. It's now a trend that Sandbridge donates the four million a year, and they want more. Even with all the emails that we've recently seen regarding their fraud, waste, and abuse, you're still considering giving them money anyway. That's ridiculous. What happened to common sense? They can't manage their own bank account, so take more money from me and give to them. When does it stop and how much is enough? By the way, where's parent responsibility in all this? By the way, you know, I taught my kid how to read and write. And this city manager, Mr. Hanson, is highly compensated, yet he cannot seem to manage the budget without raising taxes and fees. This is his job, and he works for you. If he can't do it, maybe we should find somebody that can do it. The compensation does not match the confidence. People have to make tough choices, so too should the city. Prioritize instead of taking more from me so that you can keep spending it on things that we don't want. I have a whole bunch of other stuff, first time doing the whole city council thing, so I'm just going to end it with saying this is a mess. We try to teach our children to prioritize and to manage their budgets so that they can be successful, and then they're looking at this mess. So this needs to be fixed, not your whims and wants. We need to focus on the needs. I say John and Jessica's budget looks good to me, the people's budget, and I hope that you'll consider that instead of this travesty.
Thank you. Welcome.
Susan Hobbs, and then Bryant Richardson.
I'm just a grandparent, raising two kids. And my grandson is supposed to go to kindergarten next year, and he's all going to go half-day because of where we're zoned to go. And...
Talking to the microphone, ma'am, we're listening.
Okay. He needs to go all day. Times have changed. Schooling has changed. We have changed. I don't want no more taxes, but if it's needed to give our kids, all children, the proper education, then that's, by God, what we need to do. I was not expecting to be raising two kids at my age, and my husband at 61, he was not expecting to be raising two kids. And then, what did you guys do? Play dodgeball to pick out the schools that aren't going all day? How does that even work? How? Like, we're zoned for Red Mill, but I'm going to have to put in a request for Three Oaks, because Three Oaks is going all day. So can someone, one of you guys, tell me, did you just line the schools up and throw a ball at them, and what ball it hit, they get to go all day? Is that how it was pitched? I just want to know. Think about the children. Times have changed. Yes, we went half-a-day and we're fine. Or are we? Are we fine? No, the country's freaking falling apart! But they all need to be going all day. All of Virginia Beach, not just 40-whatever, all 54 schools, needs to be going all day long for the children, not for, like, oh, childcare, or, oh, I just want my kid in the school because I do. That's not it at all. I was supposed to register my grandson yesterday. I couldn't. I mentally couldn't because he's going to regress, because he's going to pre-K all day long right now through Three Oaks. Then he's going to go half-a-day, and, and in the middle of the day. That's not going to work. Would you like to get up and go to work the middle of the day? You can't, you're not thinking straight. No kid can. They need to go all day long. That's just all there is to it. I hope you all are fully awake now, and you remember me for the rest of your life. God bless.
Thank you very much.
Bryant Richardson. Bryant Richardson.
Hi, I'm Susan Hobbs. I'm sorry, I think that...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, and council members, thank you for your time.
Welcome.
I'm writing, I am here to express my advocacy for the implementation of the full-day of kindergarten across the District of Virginia Beach Schools in the fall of 2019. This is the right choice to make for all educational stakeholders, but most essentially for the five-year-olds who will step into their schools for the first time this fall to begin their academic lives. I'm a mother, an educator, and a military spouse, and I'm currently a William &amp; Mary graduate student studying to become a school counselor, because I'm devoted to supporting the social, emotional, and academic development of the whole child. I've experienced many different school districts as both a teacher and a parent, and my experience in all of these roles and realms has given me perspective about the social, emotional, and academic impact of a full-day of kindergarten. The current half-day structure is inherently unequipped to provide the socialization and academic growth that our Virginia Beach schools deserve and that our educators have the ability and the desire to provide. My son attended full-day kindergarten when we lived in a different state, and I wanted to share some of the most valuable experiences of that year from him. He was able to experience the autonomy of standing in a lunch line to make choices about what he would eat, to communicate his choices to the servers, and to pay for his meal. He experienced the dynamic of eating in the cafeteria and the social implications that come with that. His class had two 20-minute recesses where they experienced creative free play and the personal agency that this engenders. On a daily basis, his teachers had the time to read them chapters from the Magic Treehouse series, and Mary Pope Osborne became my son's favorite author as a kindergartner. The class passed around a journal, which a different kid took home every day. The next day, that child had the opportunity to stand in front of the class and read aloud their writing to their peers. A parent volunteer taught Spanish once a week, and in addition to learning vocabulary of a second language, they grew in their multicultural awareness. All of this required patience and, most of all, time. In the half-day model, kindergarten is a rushed time crunch. Recession is eliminated because they simply cannot cover the curriculum requirements unless they utilize every available moment to cover the academics. This runs contrary to every bit of intuition, as well as research and data, that we know about an effective and enriching early childhood experience. This environment is not fair to either the kindergarteners or to their teachers. Our teachers are capable and enthusiastic to make their students' experience so much more than it is. They are simply constrained by the lack of time, and they are put in the impossible situation of covering the same curriculum that other elementary schools in our district have twice the time to cover. Furthermore, many of the students in Virginia Beach are military children, and some of these kindergarteners will move to different states for first grade. Because of their experience with kindergarten in Virginia Beach, they will enter new schools at a disadvantage because of their limited exposure to the full experience of school life. This is wrong, and our military children deserve much better than this. All of our children deserve much better than this. It is fundamentally the wrong choice to ignore research about education and delay the implementation of a full day. It is also unacceptably inequitable to continue the inconsistency of having full-day kindergarten in some schools but not others. As tax-paying individuals, we feel that our children have the right to have the same access to kindergarten that others do. As a taxpayer, I am willing to support and accept the tax increase that may be required in order to implement the full day across the board for all Virginia Beach elementary schools. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Bryant Richardson. And after Mr. Richardson is Teresa Langwell.
Welcome, sir.
Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Woods, and Councilman Ralston Jones, I'm Bryant Richardson. I'm the secretary of People First Action Club, helped by the Corales Club. People First Action Club is an organization that helps people with disabilities how to speak up for ourselves. I'm speaking tonight for the city budget and what it will mean for clients in the Community Service Board when it comes to funding. I'm one of them that's been, for almost 30 years now, I've been in the Supportive Living Program and Supportive Employment Program. The staff in both programs have been very helpful for me in terms of living and plus getting a job. I'm speaking on behalf of People First Action Club and the consumed clients in the Community Service Board that we, that the city needs to prove more funding for people with disabilities when it comes to housing, jobs, transportation. Sadly, there have been several clients in the last several years that have died, and we need to make sure the clients also prove their eligibility for insurance benefits and the ones that are, that prove their eligibility for the Medicaid waivers and so forth without costing them. It's also a matter that the townhouses be protected from the flood at a time when climate change is a real serious issue for every one of us, but of course, it's a matter of protecting the people with disabilities with the right funding services that they need, most consumers like me, that is. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I've been listening to a lot of this, and I did bring some, something to say. My name is Teresa Langwell. I've been up here before. My husband and I are a flood victim of Matthew, as you all know. And as of right now, I don't believe there's been very much done at all in our area, because we are low-income. I think there was zero allocated to our area. But besides that, I just wanted to say that what we need is government out of our pockets in every level of government. I've talked to the teachers before. We want what they want, but because of the misappropriation or misuse of funds that we have, the special projects, the arena and all that, the private public contracts, we're very much decided. But we are really all on the same side. We want what's best for our city, and we want what's best for our children. I don't know if kindergarten is the best. I would hope that those people that do not want their children in school all day in kindergarten or preschool, which I think is intended in the next 15 or 20 years to be having children in school, even in preschool, I don't know if that's good or bad, but I do know that that choice should be there. When I got ready to come here, my water bill came in, and I thought that was prophetic. Our solid waste collection for one month was $19.66. Our stormwater fee was $11.91. Our sanitary sewer, whatever, was $26.34. Our service availability was $3.77, and our utility tax was $2.70. Our total bill was $70.35. There are two of us there, and our water consumed was $6.60. We cannot afford to have our prices to live raised. That said, I'm wondering, where is all the money going? Because I kind of agree with everybody here that we need to make priorities. I don't add a room to my house if my plumbing's not working. I think that's kind of silly. I understand that the biggest part of the CIP is economic development, which is tourism. That you're raising my taxes, and then in six years, you project the CIP for stormwater will be the biggest portion of the CIP. But not until you raise my taxes and fees for the next six years. We've heard this before. I've heard it for the last four years in both elections. Neighborhoods have been experiencing flooding for years while you have been raising those fees year after year, before Matthew even happened. Maintenance continues to have a backlog, while increases in fees fund more personnel. Street sweeping and mosquito control were moved out of public works when the one-cent light rail tax was repurposed to stormwater, and now it's going back to public works, but you want an additional 1.5 cent increase of 8.5 million to fund moving 105 personnel out of stormwater management, plus hire an additional 10 new position, and nothing is going to get done any sooner. Please vote no on this bait-and-switch budget. Please vote no on raising our taxes and fees, and vote yes on the people's budget as presented by council members Moss and Abbott and a group of volunteers, of citizens. Thank you very much.
And then Leslie Jones.
Oh, my gosh. Yes, I tripped, I'm sorry.
Welcome.
What an entrance. Hello, thank you for letting me speak, and I'm short and to the point. Our mayor says that we're facing tough economic times, yet we are building a sports center, a dome site, three parking garages, giving special subsidies to the vibe district. Seems to me like that's more important to you than us living paycheck to paycheck. The city manager works for you. Tell him no. No, 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 no. To all taxes and fees that are increasing for us. And yes, on the people's budget. Axe to tax, we're over it. I'm taxed enough, we're all taxed enough, and we vote for you. I vote. I'm a Virginia Beach City resident. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Leslie Jones. Leslie Jones. After Ms. Jones is Mary Meehan.
Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening to Mayor Dyer, City Council, and Manager Mr. Hanson. It appears six consecutive years of increases in real estate assessments and over 3% increase in assessments for this year is apparently not enough to continue the excessive spending on wants instead of needs in this budget. Instead of our city manager's budget proposes raising taxes and fees for needed stormwater maintenance projected out over 15 years while fully funding the sports center, dome site, three parking garages, and a new city hall in a shorter amount of time. This, I feel, is setting the wrong priorities. Council, please vote no on the city manager's budget and yes on the people's budget that takes care of pay compression for safety personnel without raising taxes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mary Meehan.
Welcome.
And then Stephen Kers.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Dyer and City Council members. My name is Mary Meehan, and I have lived here for 23 years. I left Long Island years ago because of increased taxes and regulations. You know, it's a fortune to live there in Long Island today, and people are moving out of the states because they can't afford the real estate taxes. They go from 15,000 to 20,000. My brothers pay that. And I also have many family members who are kindergarten teachers, my sister in particular, and she told me that the New York education system is completely failed, especially New York City Mayor de Blasio, because he's always spending, spending, spending endlessly. When I heard taxes were going to increase here in Virginia Beach, it made me very, it made me feel like it's getting like New York here. And that's one thing I left years ago. After getting caught fleecing the taxpayers for expensive meals and first-class air travel, after numerous emails and texts exposing their deception to increase taxes was not even needed for full-day kindergarten, after getting an additional 14 million from the state, an additional 2 million in lower debt service, and ending the last two budget cycles with 44 million in surplus revenue, why are they asking for a tax increase? Tell the school board no to a tax increase. They have a funding formula. They need to use it wisely. Please vote no on raising taxes and fees, and yes on the Moss-Abbott people's budget.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stephen Kers. And after Mr. Kers is Elizabeth Wright.
Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Kers. I'm a resident of Virginia Beach since 1975, and I live in the Bayside Borough, about a mile from here. I'm the president of a condo association just near Bayside High School. Condo Association is pretty much like you all in the city. So we figured, we have an association manager, which is pretty much like the city manager develops budgets and so forth. We have a volunteer board of directors. I'm a volunteer president. We have, it's just like city council, they have a voice of making decisions for the condo board. We have 172 units in another condo, so there's, there's no compensation in any way for any shape or form, so there's no money for anything. That is one of the things. We assess dues. We spend money. We do not spend money unless we have it in the bank. We live within our means, and we hope that the city would also do the same thing. We've never asked an owner to pay an assessment for a potential project. If we do not have the funds, project is put on the hold. The proposal for city to increase fees and taxes may be forced to increase the monthly dues of our condos substantially just to cover the cost, and this is just talking water. The current condo dues include water, sewage, garbage, and landscaping, and that's what they pay for in their monthly dues. Their monthly dues are very reasonable. They haven't been increased in four years, and so that is a, an attribute to the association president, I'm sorry, the association manager. So the potential increase with added taxes and fees would not only be $15 as they were told, it would be that plus approximately $60 to increase those fees, which is about a 35% increase. And the dues are due to specifically condo water costs. We pay 100, about $135,000 a month for water right now. So with the increased costs that they're proposing, that would go up substantially about 2%, or two, two times. This would cause an increase of rents, slowdown in unit retail sales, and would drive residents from the area. We don't, we don't see that. I do not approve of any increases in fees and taxes. Matter of fact, we figure that fees are nothing more than taxes and wolf's clothing. So it's just, the only difference is they're not tax-deductible because they're not a tax. So I request to not approve any taxes or fee increases at all. So that is the, my personal views, that is not from the condo, so.
Thank you, sir.
Can I answer any questions?
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Wright. And after Ms. Wright is Nancy Parker.
Welcome.
Hi. Let me begin by stating that I am a fiscal conservative. As a Virginia Beach citizen, taxpayer, and mother of two school-aged children, this all-day kindergarten funding issue has me beating my head against a wall. I will not disagree that the school board dropped the ball to this point. The selection process for all-day kindergarten is inherently discriminatory. I understand all too well the struggles that families face. I happen to live in the school district that generates the most tax revenue from property taxes, yet I am being denied a service that I'm paying for. I am already carrying a higher tax burden by nature of where I live. Why must I be forced to spend an additional $10,000 to send my child to private kindergarten so that she can have the same benefit of all-day learning? For the, for those people who object to their taxes, to their taxes being raised to pay for my child's kindergarten, I would remind them that I have been paying taxes for years for other children to have all-day kindergarten. With as much frivolous spending that is part of the city's $2 billion budget, I find it hard to believe that city council couldn't find $5 million somewhere that is otherwise allocated for a frivolous purpose such as funding for something in the water. Money wasn't earmarked for the budget, in the budget for this purpose when the current budget was passed, as the festival had not even been planned at that point. How is it that city council somehow can find money in the budget to fund and support things that benefit tourists and special interests, yet find it so hard when it comes to residents' needs and for such an important issue? How is it that the city can prioritize a surf park at a price tag for taxpayers of $95 million and $68 million for an indoor basketball courts and a track that will benefit a limited number of people? These are not critical needs. The equal education of our students is a critical need. How can you expect some children to be able to learn in three hours what others are allowed six hours for? As a last resort, I encourage city council to support this tax increase. $25 on a $300,000 house is a small price to pay for the education of our youngest children. Quite frankly, I find it insulting that I have to beg city leaders for a service that I have been paying for, for 13 years, but I am unable to receive any benefit from. I urge you not to sit back and let the failures, the failures of the school board dictate your ability to rectify the situation. Your vote in support of the funding will finally level the playing field for all kindergarteners. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Nancy Parker. And after Ms. Parker is Laura Hughes.
Welcome.
Does everybody want to stand up and stretch for a second? Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Jim Wood, and council members, thank you all so much for your patience tonight. It takes me back to old times, and I don't miss this at all, but I, I do appreciate the energy that's been in this room tonight. It has been really enlivening to sit back and listen to all the different perspectives. During the budget process last fiscal year, the council appropriately focused on drainage issues for those neighborhoods severely impacted by recent stormwater flooding from Matthew. Funds were allocated where they could provide the most relief, and those neighborhoods, fortunate enough not to be severely impacted, had to wait a bit longer. In this year's capital improvements project budget, a request for funding by staff, project number 7064000, which replaces the present drain pipes under the 24th Street area and the resort area with three box culverts. The central resort district area has some of the oldest infrastructure in the city. As more intensive element has created greater impervious surfaces, the amount of stormwater runoff expected to go through this section exceeds its capacity. This will be a major component in the master central resort drainage CIP program, 7041000, project, which will address many of the same major issues that were plaguing those neighborhoods from Chatham on all the way up through Pinewood, Lakewood, up to the 16th Street area. The Resort Beach Civic League respectfully requests that council fund the CIP budget project, 7064, on page 276 in this year's budget. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much.
And yes, funding is, for flooding is a major issue.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Laura Hughes. And after Ms. Hughes is Rick Ellis.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, I have never spoken before you either, but Mayor Dyer and council members, thank you for giving us this opportunity. My name's Laura Hughes. I am on the school board, however, I am not speaking on behalf of the school board. I'm speaking on behalf of citizens, many of whom have reached out to me, and, and I'm a citizen as well. School board has a nearly $1 billion budget and also in excess of $20 million in reversion funds, it seems, on a yearly basis. We do not have a funding problem. We have a spending problem, and we have a problem setting priorities. Four issues to this point that we need to address. One is, you will hear regularly that the school board asked for $14 million to implement full-day kindergarten, and that city council gave them 6.7 million, which is true. The problem is, the school board only used a third of that money to implement full-day kindergarten and spent 2/3 of it on other things. Now the school board wants another $4.9 million to finish, which will come in the form of a tax raise. And for those of you doing the math, 4.9 is slightly more than that 2/3 that was spent on other things. So it sounds like the 14 million was not needed, but we should have spent that 6.7 million on kindergarten instead of squandering it on other things. I also listened to the video of the informal session last night, and I heard the school board chair say two things in the same presentation. One is that if city council gives us the funds now, we won't be back. A little bit later, we heard that we will not be implementing full-day kindergarten in three schools. I can guarantee you in two years, we'll be back. The third issue is dishonesty, and I'd like to refer to two emails here that a citizen forwarded, and they showed up on Facebook. And one is from the school board chair, to the superintendent, stating that another school board member suggested that implementing the last three could be absorbed into the budget without extra funding. And she stated, "I fear this move will gain momentum, and we will lose out on funding." Another one is from another school board member, Dan Edwards, and this is to the superintendent, the chief of staff, and the CFO. And he is concerned that it is going to be a very hard sell to both city council and the general public as to why it takes almost $7 million to add only eight more schools. I suggest we need some creative tools to explain this message. We also have another issue with dishonesty, and one is that school board, I mean, I'm sorry, budget meetings and public input went from September to the end of February. The school board was supposed to vote on its budget March 5. On the Friday before that day, each board member got a phone call from the chair stating that a council member approached her and said, "Go ahead and ask for the money. I'm sure we have the votes." You have to ask yourself why this didn't happen, and during the six months of public input, the discussion, and everything being posted online, a tax raise is not needed to implement this. We're only looking at implementing this full-day kindergarten one year earlier. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Velvet Smith.
Welcome.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Velvet Smith, and I actually had something written that I was going to read, but I've heard a lot of comments this evening from a lot of different people. One of the things that I didn't expect was what Laura Hughes just mentioned that was all over Facebook and the dishonesty with the school board. I've been following city council for a long time. Haven't put as much emphasis on the school board. And I recently started paying attention a couple of years ago when they asked for money for full-day kindergarten. One of the reasons is because I have a four-year-old and a 16-year-old daughter. And my 16-year-old is an honor student at First Colonial. I've heard a lot of teachers and education-oriented principals and teachers speak, but I haven't seen a lot of parents here challenge full-day kindergarten. And myself as a parent, I'm very engaged with my children, and a lot of the things that the teachers and the principals spoke of are things that I think that a lot of children should learn at home. I realize that there are a lot of children who are at a disadvantage. I was raised by a single mother, myself, who raised three daughters that were a year apart. You know, I didn't have anything. I bought my first condo in Virginia Beach at 27. I grew up in Norfolk. I've progressively seen our taxes really go up over the past 10 years. I was diagnosed with a disability two years ago, and it put a really big impact on my life and our finances. My husband now has to work very long hours to hold up our household. Budgeting has been something that I've had to learn over the past couple of years. I've always lived a comfortable life, but I've worked very hard for it. I worked at the Virginia Beach Amphitheater, and I sold sponsorships for the beach events program at the Oceanfront for nearly 20 years. So, you know, lives change and finances change on a daily basis, but it seems as though we're getting hit from every angle. Tax increases, I understand them, but I don't understand why it is that we have a dishonest school board who pulled a bait-and-switch on us. They asked for money two years ago. I supported it fully. I still support full-day kindergarten because I believe that there are children out there that need it, but I also feel that there is a lot of responsibility that goes to the parents here. And I think parental time is really important at that age. My stepson is four years old, and we spend a lot of time together, and I feel grateful for that. I didn't get to do that with my 16-year-old daughter, but she's an honor student at First Colonial, and she's taking AP classes as a sophomore. And I think that that says a lot about half-day kindergarten and how much it really hurts our children. And some of the parents, some of the educators here, I know for a fact have children that are in ODC and advanced classes as well, so, and they had half-day kindergarten.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Robert Dean. Robert Dean. And after Mr. Dean is Ken Cord.
Welcome. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm waiting for this conversation to end, and then I'll begin. Okay? My name's Robert Dean, resident of Rose Hall District. My presentation this evening is for the public who may be here or those at home watching on VBTV 48. What the general public does not know is how this year's budget is receiving additional tax revenues from the appreciated value of their homes and how they are being hit with a double tax increase. Here's how it works. In this year's, if this year's assessment increase is 1% higher, actually, this year is 2.46% higher than last year's assessments, by law, the rate must be reduced commensurate to the higher assessments. After that assessment rate is lowered, a separate public hearing must be held to raise the tax rate to the existing rate or even a higher rate, which is what city council is proposing. The current real estate tax rate is $1.1025 per hundred. The proposed increase is 0.391. The new proposed rate will be $1.075, which is a 4% increase over the state-required lower rate, which will be 97.84 cents. Council is also proposing raising the new rate, tax rate up to $1.036, a 6% increase. How many of you in this audience tonight and watching on TV received a 6% pay increase from your employer? Not many, unless you work for the government. We need to adopt the people's budget, no tax or fee increases. There's only one way to stop our uncontrollable big-spending government and returning to an affordable government, and it's up to you. City council, you need to tell the city manager two words. If he can't bring in a tax-neutral, a tax-and-fee-neutral budget, and those words are by Donald Trump, you're fired.
Ken Cord. And after Mr. Cord is Marlena Castelluzzo.
Welcome. Congratulations to the new people on council. I hope you guys take, ask the mayor's, you know, leaving as a hint. But with that being said, government is the negation of freedom. Your actions just prove that. Tax on light rail without getting approval from your bosses, we, the people. Been caught in blatant lies from the city budget director, which I got on YouTube, who said the real estate tax stayed the same, but the real estate assessment went up. Bruce Thompson came in to city council for additional money for the Cavalier, which is private, which he said he was not going to do, and you guys gave him the money. VBDA gave, agreed well in advance who was going to be awarded the pier project for only a dollar a year that we were going to get from them. Paid for water fountain feature for the brewery company, Green Flash, which went into bankruptcy. Lost the money on that one. Bitcoin company, the company B Cause LLC, received taxpayer money. That also went into bankruptcy. Taxed twice on restaurant tab, which isn't that taxation without representation? It's kind of like property tax, too. Get sales tax and a property tax. Tax people out of multimillions of all-day kindergarten only to have the school board use half of it, and I just heard that it's even less than that. The date in which the city will be completed for flooding upgrades, from my memory, that keeps changing, it's 15 years, but I'm sure that will change again. The unfunded liability has yet to have been dealt with. The city gave money to something in the water, which we will not really get true benefits out of. In fact, Mr. Moss, I would love for you to do an audit to see as far as what's really going on behind the scenes and see what the benefit-to-cost ratio was for that. Hanson puts out a graph on taxes going up, except for personal property tax, if I'm not mistaken, then makes an edit to the side of the graph that will actually go up to $4.10, as if people are going to pay close attention to what's written over here as opposed to the graph. Why isn't the stockpiles that Hanson loves to cite being utilized to keep people's taxes going up, being used? The problems with the city is, the problems with, the city is facing currently are our problems, but you guys are creating it, and we have to suffer for y'all's consequences. Let's look at Rosie's gambling, which is kind of hand-in-hand with the state. I remember when there were little city shopping centers that had little gambling-type deals, and they were done through the computer, and you guys didn't like it, and you said, "Uh-uh, shut it down." You guys have a monopoly, not necessarily you guys per se, but government has monopoly on things, but yet when we try and do it, uh-uh, no, no, no.
Marlena Castelluzzo.
Welcome.
And then Krista Booth.
Good evening. I'm Marlena Castelluzzo, Chair of the Virginia Beach Taxpayer Alliance, and I reviewed my April 2017 budget meeting speech, and I might as well be giving the same one, as we are facing the same issues with the same level of disregard for Virginia Beach citizens' well-being. What a sorry state of affairs this is. It's with sadness and despair that I find myself again before this body, addressing repeated failure of fiduciary responsibility. I will not, as many tonight have addressed, this specific dollars and cents, because you already know those figures and the errors of the city manager's egregious bloated budget. Why do we need to tell you how to do your job? Mayor Dyer, one of your major campaign promises sending you aside from your opponent was your commitment to start the budget process earlier, get citizen input and transparency into the procedure. We were promised an equal seat at the table, not the oceanfront, nor the historical campaign contributing developers. Our VBTA endorsement of you, Mayor, was an incomparable endorsement. We were at the front of identifying the differences between a citizens' mayor and your opponent, who would simply be another Will Sessoms who allowed Bruce and friends to control our city. The leadership that we were subjected to through the Sessoms' reign was one of total disregard for the citizens' need. You promised the citizens a different mindset going forward and positive changes for the average Virginia Beach resident. To quote my 2017 speech, "Again, we are here to address a city budget that flies in the face of rational judgment." We continue to recognize that Mr. Hanson, with his officer's military retirement and Virginia Beach salary that exceeds that of the Secretary of Defense, has a massive challenge with obvious negligible results year after year. He fails to relate to citizens who are on fixed incomes, struggle to meet basic needs such as food, medicine, and housing, public servants whose salaries are not keeping up with the rising cost of living, and those citizens who are still trying to recover from the flooding devastation. Mayor, why did you allow this manager to bring forth a budget putting burdens again on the average citizen? Better yet, why is someone with such a total lack of comprehension or simply gross disregard for citizens' needs still holding his position? VBTA, VBTA endorses the people's 1920 city budget, and we ask for rational, citizen-driven thinking from this council. Mayor Dyer, I've previously addressed your belief that you are a citizen advocate. Virginia Beach citizens need your advocacy. Do not inflict additional hardship by raising taxes and fees when a solution is before you. Lead this council with a vote. Do not raise taxes. Do not go back on your word.
Thank you.
Krista Booth. And after Ms. Booth is Andrew Lonlon.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Krista Booth. I am a pre-K teacher at Trentwood Elementary School. Not only am I a teacher, I am a mother of two children who are school age, and I am a resident of Virginia Beach. This evening, you've heard a lot of teachers, a lot of administrators speak as the role of an administrator, as the role of a teacher. I would like to speak to you tonight as a representative of the five-year-olds who are not able to be here and who are not able to speak for themselves. These five-year-olds do not have control over the budget that many people have complained about with the mishandling of funds or the inappropriate use of funds. These children had nothing to do with that and should not be affected by that aspect. My question for you is, where is the equality for all of the kindergarten children? We have a huge portion of children who will receive all-day kindergarten, who currently are, and then we have the 15% who are not. As an all-day pre-K teacher, you all have heard the benefits of having the instructional time of the full day. I will not go through the academic benefits, as you guys are all aware of that, but there are the difficulty with the aspect that if you're not familiar with the pre-K program, these are at-risk children who qualify. So not all four-year-olds receive this program and go to school all day. Of my class of 16 children, five of them go to school all day this year and will have half-day kindergarten next year. One of the main pieces that is a huge emphasis in our pre-K and kindergarten program beyond the academic aspect is social and emotional development. For early childhood, social and emotional development is the foundation of success for children, not only in their future in school and academics, but their future in life. The area of social-emotional development allows children to control and express feelings, form positive relationships not only with friends but with adults, work with others, work as a team, problem-solve, have experiences with rewarding aspects of life, and most importantly, build confidence. These children need this aspect to be successful in all areas, and with just three and a half hours in a day and topped on top of their academics is a very hard challenge. I have two stories for you. One is the story of a little boy who was very shy, very reserved. This little boy, looking at him this year, has come out of his shell. This little boy is talking with all his peers when he was once shy and held back and would feel in anxiety. This little boy is reading to his class with confidence. This little boy is my son, who got to experience all-day kindergarten. The next story I have for you is a little girl who is in my class, who keep in mind is at-risk. Today, she told me, "I want to stay at school all day, all night. I want to sleep here." This child has established love for school, and this makes them want to come back, and we have got to give that to all kindergarteners, not just a portion of them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Andrew Conlon. Andrew Conlon. Donna Howland. And then after Ms. Howland, will be Virginia Wasserberg.
Welcome.
Mayor and members of council, I am Donna Howland. The concept of a budget is neither complex nor complicated. Expenditures are deducted from incoming revenue, leaving a balance hopefully positive. However, it appears that our city is constantly in the negative, thereby we are constantly hit with increases in taxes and fees. Nothing ever seems to be eliminated in order to stay within a budget. This city just keeps spending. This is a spending problem, not a funding problem. In 2015, the real estate tax was increased 1.8 cent for light rail. An additional $5 fee was also added to all car registrations to bring that fee to $30 per vehicle for the local vehicle registration fee. Light rail was voted against, yet we are still paying these taxes and fees. We should have received a refund of those taxes and fees rescinded. Instead, those increases and the money they generate have been kept by the city, so where are they now? In 2017, the real estate tax rate was increased by 1.25 cents to the now 1.0025 per hundred value to help pay for full-day kindergarten for two years. This was to allow the school board to realize exactly how much they would need to budget to continue the program. Now they are requesting more money to fund all-day kindergarten again. With a decreasing school enrollment every year, they also seem to have a spending problem, not a funding problem. The stormwater fees were also increased supposedly for five years to pay for infrastructure improvements. Where is that money? Now the city manager is requesting yet another real estate tax increase of 1.5 cents on the heels of increased assessments at the current rate. In addition, he is asking for increase again in the trash fee and again in the stormwater maintenance fee. Why cannot this city manager live within a budgeted amount? Why, if something must be added, cannot something be eliminated? That is what we have to do with our own budgets. The city should not be any different. In 2018, the fees, not the water, just the fees and taxes, part of my bill, was $865.85. If you approve the increase in fees, that amount will approach and probably exceed $1,000. My current real estate tax on my house, which is assessed at way less than $300,000, is My real estate tax increase, just on the increased assess amount, will be $83.21 per year. If you raise the real estate tax rate on top of that, it will increase $123.35. I'm not alone in these amounts. Now we find out that the city manager is trying to sneak through a 10-cent increase in personal property tax. Based on my last year's personal property tax, that will add about $24. The city found, just like that, to give towards the Something in the Water Festival, paying for all our city resource, but who is paying for all our city resources being used, plus the extra police, fire, and other personnel from other cities and the state?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Virginia Wasserberg. And after Ms. Wasserberg will be Jim Brimman.
Welcome.
Good evening. I just want to clear up a few things about all-day kindergarten. I didn't come here to speak about it, but as it is my understanding that this city is funding all-day kindergarten at this time, and the only thing that's being asked is to speed up that amount in the next year. So I think we all need to really understand that there aren't going to be any kids in the next, I think in two years from now, that won't have all-day kindergarten. And I think it's kind of ridiculous to ask for a tax increase that will be imposed on people generations from now for something to just be sped up in one year. You have in front of you a document that I provided. I did a poll on Stop the Flooding Now, and I just wanted to get the public appetite when it came to this idea of tax and fee increases for flooding and sea level rise. Our money right now for stormwater goes into a stormwater fund. It doesn't go into a flood control program fund. I think that's outrageous, with as many flood control projects as that we have. If you're going to collect money for flood control, then there needs to be a fund for that money to go into, because I believe it was David Bradley, he told us at the Tea Party meeting that, you know, stormwater goes for all kinds of things. It doesn't just go for flood control projects. So if you're going to raise taxes and fees for sea level rise and for flooding, then you need a fund, like the TIP fund, to put that money in and allocate it for just those flood control projects. And I would suggest to you, Mr. Hanson, for you guys to maybe do something like that, because I have this poll here that I asked people to participate in, and we had 298 votes, and 94% of those people, and I've listed all the names for you, said, "Please don't raise my taxes and fees without having that dedicated revenue source." And only 6% of the people polled said, "Yeah, go ahead and raise my taxes and fees." So their names are in here. You can cross-check them with where they live. I didn't go that far into that. But one thing that we need to remember is in 2017, I asked you to fund flooding, and your response to me was with a stormwater fee increase. And my neighborhood of Windsor Woods has not seen the results of that stormwater fee increase. In fact, our flood- In fact, our flood control projects are being funded through grant programs that are at the federal level, and we're all sitting around waiting, and I've spoken with my Congresswoman, I've gone past you, and I've gone past my state, and I've gone to my Congresswoman, and I've said, please, fund this. Please put in the tide gates, please put in the pump stations. It's just outrageous to keep raising our fees and telling us that you're going to put in pump stations and tide gates and not do it. That's called empty promises. John Moss said that this budget had two words for it, false choices, and while I might agree with that, I'd have to say there are two more, and it's called empty promises. We're fed up with that. Mayor Dyer, Stop the Flooding Now supported you in your campaign for mayor, and, you know, you said you were going to do something about flooding and sea level rise, so do it. Let's make that fund, let's get that blue ribbon commission, and let's do something.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim Brenman. And then the next speaker is John Stepp.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Is everybody having fun yet? All right, good. So let me sum up. The problems with pay compression, the problems with all-day kindergarten, the all-days, the problem with calling striped cat a skunk, I mean, taxes as fees, all are foreseeable problems, all right? And climate change is real, and that's a foreseeable problem. And we can keep sprinkling sand on the waterfront, we can keep sprinkling sand at Sandbridge and at Croatan, and if personal property is the thing that is most important to driving our revenue in this city, which it is thanks to the Dillon Rule, we need to protect ground that is higher and not in a flood zone, like my neighborhood, I'm the president of Lake Shore Civic League. And we have a problem. It's a noise problem, it's a light pollution problem, it's a traffic problem, and we need a wall to stop that, because otherwise, we are going to go en masse and get our home assessments lowered, and you're going to lose that money, all right? Now I understand that having the oceanfront, I understand having Croatan, I understand Sandbridge drives a lot of revenue to this city, but you're going to drive a lot of people out of this city if we don't solve the problems in the north end, in the west end of that city. I don't want to get Burton stationed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John Stepp. And after Mr. Stepp is Kenny Golden.
Welcome, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, how are you? Basically, I am a homeowner in the city of Virginia Beach and a modest, small-business owner, and primarily, my, what I'm hearing and what I've gathered tonight is one side that doesn't want their taxes increased, and then unfortunately, I've lost the largest contingent here of public safety and educators, but these tax increases affect all of us, everyone that lives in the city of Virginia Beach. And my biggest issue is, I mean, a lot of times, you know, you look at these things and you say, personal property tax. Well, you know, give the educators and the public safety people a raise, and they say, oh, now I can afford a new vehicle, and they go out and buy a new vehicle, and next thing you know, and May comes and they receive that whopping personal property tax bill, they go, oh, my goodness. So, you know, it makes you sort of envy people that live in other states that don't have property tax. Obviously, that's a Virginia problem, but I don't think that our city council should add on to the burden that we are already dealt with, which is the right to own something, you pay a fee for the right to own something, which, you know, that's a big issue with me. Another issue that I do have a problem with is the increase in the Public Utilities Bill, because one of the things that I have thought for years is that 20 years ago, before people started recycling as much, the trash man came once a week and emptied the trash can. Well, now, the majority of my trash goes into the recycling bin, but yet the trash man still comes once a week and empties a can that usually only has maybe one or two bags in it. So that seems like a waste to me, and it seems like redundant that you're going to charge more for a guy who comes out and empties a can that's already empty, so, or has been emptied recently. So that's one of the issues that I have. But I think that probably the biggest issue is that can we fund education and public safety without putting the burden on the taxpayers? I think that we can trim the fat on the budget and probably find ways that we can make things that are being wasteful, areas that are being wasteful, to try to fund things that we want to try to fund. I do think that's a reasonable situation. In summation, I just hope that you do not increase the cost of living in the city of Virginia Beach. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kenny Golden. And after Mr. Golden will be Teresa Smith.
Welcome.
Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Woods, members of city council, and my old friend there, Dave Hanson, good to see you again. I wasn't going to speak about this, but I think I should. Having experience with firefighting, having been a captain of a ship, you go through extensive training, both as a crew member and as a captain, and we asked these young people, men and women, to go into the fire, and having been in the fire, having worn the same ensemble that they did, having experienced that, I remember the first thing that came to my mind was, if I screw this up, it could kill me. And that's what we're asking these people to do. They're asking them to go in and save people's lives and save our property, and the least we could do is fix their pay and fix it right, finally. I've heard this for at least the five or six years I've been coming to city council, so we need to fix that. Second thing is the business of kindergarten. The people that come here tonight and have talked about that, in my mind, the argument is misplaced here. It should have been at the school board, directing the school board to tell the superintendent of schools to find that $4.9 million, $4.9 million out of 900 million, and fix that problem themselves. We should demand that, if that's what we want. Third thing, water. I come here tonight as somebody that was a victim of that. My daughter's condominium, and she's active duty now, was flooded. Six inches of water in that condominium, and it was a mess. I remember stepping out of my tall F-250 down in the water to go in there and get their stuff out and get them in a place where they could be dry, and then having to go back and get the stuff out and find a place to store it and store it while the people fix it up. We can do better. Dave, if I was sitting in your place, that would be my number-one priority. If I'm sitting in your place, and each one of you in city council, that's my number-one priority. As a naval officer, my responsibility, I had a responsibility for millions and millions of dollars and the jobs that I had, but I was given a budget, and that budget was final. I had to take a ship from one place to another, and I couldn't ask for extra money, and once I got halfway there and said, you know, I think I'm going to run out. They didn't care. You had to perform the budget that you have. We're not doing that, my friends, and we need to do that. We need to take the people's budget, that was submitted by Councilman Moss and Councilwoman Abbott, and use that as the baseline to give David something to go by, so that he can build a budget for us that truly is a budget for the people. Use that budget and fix the problems and live within your means of our budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa Smith. Teresa Smith. Susan Hurley.
Welcome.
Thanks for your patience and not cutting this off. I know it's a long night, I'm hungry, too. My name is Susan Hurley, I've lived in Virginia Beach for 22 years. I just wrote these notes on my phone, because I decided tonight I needed to speak. I have a ninth grader in Virginia Beach Public Schools, and I willingly give a lot of my time as a volunteer in his school and another school. And although I'm wearing red, I'm opposed to giving the school board any more money at this time. I didn't know about the red. All of my three children, ages 14 to 24, went to half-day kindergarten in Virginia Beach, and I think parents should have an option for half-day kindergarten, which could even save a little money. And perhaps if there's not enough money, maybe kids who, families who really need it, they could apply for it for the interim time before it's fully funded. But why are you being put in this difficult position of asking taxpayers to pay more for full-day kindergarten implementation? The school board has a huge budget, Laura Hughes talked about it, $907 million. They could have found the $4-plus million to speed up kindergarten implementation if it had been a priority for them. They had agreed on an implementation plan, and the topic wasn't even discussed, as she said during their budget planning. It was a last-minute request to ask you to ask taxpayers to pay more. The school board has a budget that's increasing in size with a student population that's decreasing, and they had a surplus. This is a spending problem, not a funding problem. All schools will have full-day kindergarten, and without having to raise taxes again, the requested increase is to accelerate full-day kindergarten a year earlier, just one year. But how long will we have to pay for that increase? Forever. That tax increase will end up being paid by future generations, year after year, just to complete implementation one year earlier. Tell the school board to figure out how to fund their priorities. They have more than enough money. And figure out our city's priorities, focusing on our needs, not wants, just like we all have to do with our own budgets. And don't raise our taxes and fees. Raising taxes and fees every year helps create the perception that Virginia Beach is becoming an expensive place to live. A college senior recently told me, who attends college out of state, oh, I can't live in Virginia Beach, it's very expensive to live there. We don't want that perception. Our city council and our city manager should reexamine priorities and do as we taxpayers do, and live within our means. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Thank you. My friends, thank you all for hanging in there. It was a great process, it was great conversation, I appreciate the civility, I appreciate your conversation, and it will continue. Thank you all. We are adjourned.